Call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of October 18th. We'll note that all commissioners are present. And the first order of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I just thought it needed a change here. Number 10 under City Commission, you can strike number one there. They do not want it.
Oh, okay.
At this time.
So, under Tab 10, City Commission will eliminate the Charbonneau parking lot discussion.
We'll take that change with the motion.
That's with the motion? Okay. Anything else? Harry Nunna will vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss?
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Harry Nunna will vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom.
Aye.
Mr. Olman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We're going to go to 4B and cover 4B here first. It's a Diversity Month proclamation. And Mary Masood from the Mayor's Committee on Employment of Persons with Disabilities. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. October is known as Diversity Month or Employment of Persons with Disabilities. And nationally, there is a proclamation for it. I'd like to update you a little bit on the Mayor's Committee and that we are also asking for a proclamation locally. The Mayor's, Dickinson Mayor's Committee on Employment of Persons with Disabilities has been in existence since 1986. And I would like to thank the City Commission and the City of Dickinson for their support for the committee over all these years. You support us not only with your time and the Mayor's time. He's very good about attending our events and meetings, but also your financial support. We'd also like to thank the Optimist Club for their support. With the help of the city and the optimists, we're able to sponsor Diversity Days, which is generally done during Diversity Month. It's where we bring in, we go to classrooms throughout Dickinson and the region, and 4th through 6th graders are educated on different disabilities and what it would be like to live with a disability. We also, this time of year, present awards, and we have several categories. We have, I'd like to just run through those briefly. We have the Personal Achievement Award, which recognizes employees who have overcome barriers and achieved success at work. The Personal Commitment Award recognizes individuals who have demonstrated leadership and vision to positively promote employment for persons with disabilities and the understanding that through work, all people have the opportunity to succeed. The employer, then we also have the Employer Award, which recognizes a person or business who practices and promotes the employment of persons with disabilities. And finally, the Builders Award, who recognizes builders of buildings, owners, contractors, architects, who build above and beyond ADA requirements. You can think of it, you know, many times, we as individuals will have a disability on a temporary basis, whether it be a broken arm or a broken leg, and we can therefore more easily appreciate individuals with disabilities. Nationally, Disability Employment Month, Congress declared the first week in October to begin with National Employee, Employ the Physically Handicap Month. And that was in 1945. And over the years, it has changed to 1988, when the whole month is recognized as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. I do have a poster that I'd ask if the city could, this is for this year's theme, "Talent Has No Boundaries: Workforce Diversity Includes People With Disabilities." And with that, I would like to read through the proclamation that I would ask that the city approve tonight, if that's all right?
Absolutely.
Thank you. This is a proclamation to declare October as Disability Employment Awareness Month for the City of Dickinson. Whereas disabilities affect 1 in 5 Americans and more than 75% of Americans with disabilities receive no public assistance. And whereas 14.7% or 58,630 of North Dakota residents are individuals who have a disability, of which 10.7% or 36,897 are North Dakota residents, who are employed individuals with a disability. And whereas it is recognized that individuals with disabilities are ready, willing, and able to be an essential part of the City of Dickinson and the state of North Dakota. And whereas individuals with disabilities can and do provide many vital services in public and private employment sectors of Stark County, the City of Dickinson, and the state of North Dakota. And whereas individuals with disabilities demonstrate abilities in executive, administrative, and managerial positions, successfully working in diversified areas such as marketing, sales, administrative support, service industries, professional and technical fields. And whereas October has been declared National Disability Awareness Month, now therefore be it proclaimed by the City of Dickinson and the City of Dickinson's Mayor, Mayor's Committee on Employment of Persons with Disabilities on this 18th day of October 2010, that October 2010 will be and is hereby declared Disability Awareness Month. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. And I'm happy and pleased to proclaim that. And I will sign the proclamation. And normally, City Administrator Kessel attests to my signature, but we'll ask, Mr. Coling And would you like to take the proclamation?
Actually, I would, Mr. President. If I have a frame, I will go get and put it in and display it at City Hall for the rest of the month, if we may.
You certainly may.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you for your work, Mary. It's 5:20. We do have a timetable agenda item at 5:20, and that is to hear from Leah Fink regarding the Battle of the Badges Award. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. It's nice to be here with you this evening. We held our annual Battle of the Badges Blood Drive Competition in early September, and we actually had a record turnout this year. It was a wonderful event again. This is our fourth year of doing the event. And just to recap, it's a blood drive competition between area law enforcement agencies and fire departments to see who can donate and recruit the most amount of blood donors. So, I know both agencies are very busy at this time and appreciate their support and their help in this community event. It truly is a life-saving event that we're able to take part in every year. As I said, this year, we had a record turnout over the two days. We saw over 166 donors and were able to collect 182 units of blood, which is a huge help to us. And we had 46 first-time donors. So, just a little history with United Blood Services. We are the only nonprofit agency in the area that collects blood, and we serve 71 area hospitals. So, I'd like to thank both departments for their support. And this year, Team Fire is the winning team of the trophy. So, if I can get Chief Seabuck to come up, I'd like to present him with the battle trophy.
That's a trophy.
Mayor Johnson, Commissioners, I just want to take a moment to thank all of the area fire departments that helped us win this. It's always a pleasure to defeat the Dickinson Police Department at something.[607.16][607.16](Laughter). More importantly than that, though, we have a good time with it. Both agencies have a good time with it. And it's always a pleasure to help United Blood Services in this extremely worthy cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mrs. Johnson, can you give the financial report?
Mr. President, Commissioners, I'd like to highlight a few items from the financial report through September. We'll begin with the general fund report. With 75% of the year completed, our property taxes equal $2.9 million, and we're 97% collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees is 62% collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmental revenues, which include revenues we receive from state and local governments, such as the highway distribution tax and the oil production tax, is 76% collected compared to budget. In September, we received an annual payment of $500,000 in our oil and gas production tax. In our licenses, fees, and services, this includes building permit revenue and oil royalties, and is 74% collected compared to budget. This also includes the municipal court fines, which are 5% more than last year at this time. Our sales of city lots and equipment is $950,000 more than last year at this time. Our total general fund revenues equals $7.2 million through September, and we're 92% collected compared to budget. In our general fund expenses, they're broken down by groups that include general government, which is 90% expended compared to budget. This overage is due to unbudgeted armory roof repairs and the purchase of the two houses near City Hall. Our public safety, which includes police and fire, is 73% expended compared to budget. Our engineering and streets is 76% expended compared to budget. Our cultural services, which includes the museum and forestry, is 66% expended compared to budget. Our contingency and reserves includes a $65,000 contingency line item and the West River Community Center major maintenance reserve. The contingency includes conference room remodel, the Channel 19 upgrades, and our 20% share of the regional transit building. Our total general fund, general fund expenses equals $6.1 million through September, and we're 78% expended compared to budget. In our enterprise funds, our total enterprise fund revenues equal $5.6 million through September, and we're 79% collected compared to budget. And our enterprise fund expenses total $4,047,000 through September, and we're 77% expended compared to budget. The large negative cash balance in our wastewater fund is due to several projects, including the third cell improvements, the Lincoln Lift Station, and the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. These projects will be financed upon completion. In our sales tax reports, in the 1% sales tax fund, we received $334,000 of revenue in September, which is up 18.5% for the year. I have adjusted the projected revenue up 5% on this slide, based on collections we've received so far this year. Our expenses include $800,000 paid towards the Badlands Activity Center and $418,000 paid towards job creation and senior programs. This slide also shows the sales tax refund that was paid to the state due to the overpayment of local taxes by a single taxpayer. In our 1/2% sales tax, we received $167,000 of revenue in September, which is also up 18.5% for the year, and the projected revenue is also adjusted 5%. Our expenses include $598,000 paid toward the West River Community Center bond. Our sales tax refund line item is also shown on this slide. In our hospitality tax, our revenues collected are up 13% for the year. Our expenses include $99,000 paid to the CBB for the special events grant and their subsidy, and $250,000 paid towards the Badlands Activity Center. Our occupancy tax shows our revenue and expenditures are up 23% for the year. All the occupancy tax revenue collected minus the small admin fee are paid to the CBB monthly. And in our street projects report, we've received $339,000 in revenue, which was mostly special assessments and DOT reimbursements, and we've expended $1.1 million towards those projects through September. Those are some of the highlights. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Any comments or questions outside of the land sales? Anything unusual or anything that concerns you?
There isn't. The one that I had been showing, our municipal court fines, had been tracking much lower through the first six months of the year, but it's actually caught up and has now surpassed last year.
Okay.
Mrs. Johnson, fees and services seem to be lagging. Can you detail that a little bit better for us?
The other taxes and fees, or the?
I'm looking at fees and services under licenses, fees and services.
I'd have to take a look at that one specifically, to know what would be causing it. Because in total, that section is 74% collected, so it's right on, basically right on budget, but that piece must be tracking a little low. So, I'll take a look at it.
Okay. Maybe next month you could?
Yep.
Anything else? Could be a motion to approve the financial report?
We'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There's no discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom.
Aye.
Mr. Olman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Next item we have then is the annexation issue. And Mr. Coling, would you introduce that item?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Just to give a little recap, I guess, about where we are in this process and what the commission's remaining obligations are. The city is proceeding with a annexation by resolution. Under this procedure, as it's set out in North Dakota Century Code, the city defines the area that it wishes to see annexed to the city limits and believes is appropriate for annexation. That was done with the resolution that you passed on September 7th. The area proposed to be annexed was set forth and legally described in that resolution, and the resolution called for the annexation of that property into city limits. By law, owners have the opportunity to file a written protest to annexation if they choose to do so. And if more than 1/4 of the, if the owners of more than 1/4 of the land that is proposed to be annexed file written protests, it is a bar to the annexation. Also by law, property owners have to file that written protest within 30 days. That time period for filing written protest has now expired. State law provides that at this meeting, which is the first one following the expiration of the time for filing protests, the City Commission shall hear and determine the sufficiency of the protests. Therefore, your remaining obligation as a City Commission is to determine whether the owners of 1/4 of the territory proposed to be annexed have filed written protest to the annexation. Your obligation now is not to determine whether the annexation should proceed. That decision was already made with your resolution on September 7th. You need only now determine whether the owners of more than 1/4 of the territory proposed to be annexed have filed written protests. Mr. Soren has prepared a spreadsheet for you that details the protests that have been received. And I understand from Mr. Soren's information that approximately 15% of the land area has protested annexation to city limits. Now, if you accept Mr. Soren's calculations, as he has presented them, then the territory that you have proposed to annex would be annexed to city limits. In the event that you so find the motion would be to find that the owners of less than 1/4 of the territory proposed to be annexed have filed written protests to the annexation, and that the territory described in Resolution 37-2010 is hereby annexed to the city limits of the City of Dickinson, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Any comments or questions for him? Okay, Mr. Soren, do you have a report?
I did pass out a spreadsheet and a map tonight that does show the lots that did file a written protest, are highlighted in the lavender color. Through, through our calculations, we show that we received 44.34 acres in opposition, 240.941 with no reply, with a total of 15.5% of the area in opposition of the annexation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Soren. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Soren? Now, I know we have people sitting in the audience who are concerned about this issue. You heard Mr. Coling's explanation of the process. This is not really a public hearing, but we would take further comments. Okay? So, if someone would like to comment about the annexation, we'll, we'll hear your comments now. And so, I just invite you to come to the podium, state your name, and give your comments.
My name's Susan Knudsen. I'm from Andrus Outdoors. I have a few comments and concerned, concerns for us business owners up there. First of all, I've got a map of the 163 acres being annexed. This was the only map that I've ever seen. This map was mailed to me, to my home address, with my two-page letter explaining what was going on. So, this is the only map I've seen. I have no problem with this. The other business owners have no problem with it. I've also got a map that looks like this. This map I got from Tom Henning, Northern Improvement, our neighbor. I asked him where he got this map. He said that he got it the day that Matt Coling and Sean Kessel were coming around to our businesses and explaining the annexation. And I says, "Okay." I says, "Well, how come we didn't get a map like that? The two guys never gave us a map like this." But I asked Tom if he could make me a copy, and he did. Then, I've got a map that looks like this, that shows all our businesses being annexed, along with 24.90 acres of Highway 22 along with it. I've also never seen this map. I wondered where it come from. Myself and my husband come to the last two meetings you had. I guess this one come from the very first meeting that you had here. But when we walked in, there were no maps on the table, no maps anyplace else. I also got this from Tom. He said that it was mailed to him along with notification of the meeting that night. We didn't get no letter of notification at our business or our home. We would not even have known of that meeting, and I'm talking about the meeting not on October 4th, but the one prior to. We wouldn't even have known about that if Tom wouldn't have called us and told us that it's important and we should come. So, there's these three different maps floating around that are confusing some of us. We have no idea what's really going on. Then I went down to Sean Kessel's office, and I asked, I wanted a copy of the land being plotted, along with the acres, and who all owns the land. Well, I got this same map back. Shows the 163 acres and the 22 acres on Lyons, but it doesn't show any of the acreage up in our area. Doesn't show any of that. Doesn't show the landowners. I asked for a mailing list, also who was all mailed these letters, because I personally went around to each and every one of our businesses up there, and I have 16 opposes to it. And they, they all, I made sure they all sent letters in. But with going around to the landowners when I went to these businesses, some of these landowners, I had to, it took me four and five phone calls to get to the person that owned the land. And when I called them up, some of them people never even received that two-page letter. They never seen it. I says, "Well, I'll inform you what's going on. I'll fax you these papers so you can see what's going on." So, I did that, and people got their letters submitted. I also, after October 4th meeting, I was reading the Dickinson Press here. Very first paragraph, it says, "With rapid growth enveloping Dickinson, city officials are seeking to annex about 230 acres north of town." Okay, well, it's kind of what I thought after being to the first meeting. And after reading the paper, I thought that was correct. Well, then, when I went down to Sean Kessel's office and asked for a mailing list of who was supposed, supposed to get these letters, and a map that shows who owns what and how many acres, I got this here piece of paper. Shows 326.72 acres to be annexed. Right away, I says, "Hey, what's going on here? We have a little bit of a problem. It's quite a bit of acreage, acres discrepancy there." The lady at Sean Kessel's office told me that our Dickinson Press prints lies. I kind of don't like that, because I don't believe that our Dickinson Press prints lies. We've got a reporter in here. She must have got the 230 acres from somebody in here. So, I'm wondering, how do we get from 230 acres to 326.72 acres? Also, I just think that this is unfairly how this is going and being imposed upon us, so I had been reading some century codes. Century code 40-51.2-07, Annexation by Resolution. It says specifically, "No state-owned property may be annexed without the written consent of the state agency or department having control of the property." Well, I myself called Larry Gangl at the Highway Department, along with Tom from Northern Improvement. He actually went to visit him. There is no written consent given by the state Highway Department. They told us that once the City of Dickinson takes that over in the annexation, they would be more than happy to give written consent. But as of right now, there has been no written consent. So, therefore, something must be wrong with this century code, because the way I read it, it says there's got to be written consent given prior to, and that hasn't been done. So, I'm just wondering what's going on. There's three different maps floating around. What the century code says, and what the paper states, and what this paper says that I got from Sean Kessel's office, I'm just wondering what's going on. I'm thinking this is pretty rotten pool. And I thought we lived in America, and I just want to know what's going on. Somebody could explain that to all us business owners, because we would like to know.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Knudsen. Mr. Coling or Mr. Soren, any response to any of the questions that she's raised?
I will say that, you know, some of the numbers that we do have in front of us do not have the 25 acres from the Highway Department included in that 285.2 point two acres. When we recalculated, those numbers are not in here, and we have not received any response from the Highway Department, other than when we did talk with them, they didn't see any issues with the annexation as we were proceeding forward. So that would be the only issue that shows the difference that I have from the numbers that she's got to what we have here. This was done with more precise, going through the lot sizes, square footages. And the sheet she's got was kind of a generalization of the subdivisions, calculations off of the map, and calculating the areas. Once we got their protest, we went through and verified each lot, exact square footages, calculated that out to come up with this two-hundred-and-eighty-five point two-eight-one acres, of which forty-four point three-four were protesting the annexation. So that's where the calculation came from. From her sheet to this sheet, that's where there's twenty-five acres differences from the DOT right of way.
Mr. Coling?
Mr. President, just one comment. By century code, what owners of property are entitled to is a notice of this hearing and a copy of the resolution that you passed on September 7th. As she stated, Mr. Soren and Mr. Kessel went up into the area and attempted to contact property owners individually, in addition to sending letters to them, trying to explain the process. So I believe Mr. Soren and Mr. Kessel did actually go above and beyond what century code would ordinarily require in order to notify property owners of what the annexation process, as it would occur.
Mr. Soren, to the best of your knowledge, did we send a letter out to each of these properties?
To the best of my knowledge, we did send a letter to each of the property owners in the area. I do know when we went up and met, we did find that there were several buildings that were leased, and owners weren't on-site. And so the letters probably were not sent to the buildings located in town. They were sent to the owners, which, some of which are out of state, several of them Bismarck, Williston areas. So the local businesses probably wouldn't have seen the letters.
Mr. Coling, Mr. President?
Mr. Stein.
Mr. Coling, when you notify by mail, what is the address that they have, which address on file with the county, or?
The person that's entitled to notice is the record title owner of the property. So that would be the address to which a notice and resolution would be sent.
Mr. Coling, is there a requirement that the mail be certified, or is it just a?
No, there's not. It'd just be regular mail requirement.
Well, I know some businesses, I know a couple businesses that I went to personally myself. Dakota Hot Shot is one of them. It took me four phone calls to get to the owner, and they were not sent a letter, and they are out of state.
The addresses would have come through the county, Mr. Soren?
I believe Jan went up and got the addresses for us from the county for the proper notification of the notice.
Well, I have never lied a day in my life, and I can assure you that all of them weren't notified, but they have been after I faxed them the information, the paperwork, and the information on what was going on. They were notified, but I'm still not seeing, you know, where you measured our lots and whatnot. When I went down to City Hall, that's what I wanted to know. I wanted to know what kind of acreage we have up in our area, which none of us have still seen that map. And now you're talking about two-hundred-and-eighty-five acres, and the Dickinson Press still stated two-hundred-and-thirty acres. And this sheet that I have still says three-hundred-and-twenty-six point seven-two acres. And if you take off the twenty-four point nine zero acres of Highway 22, which you clearly state on this map that you do have that in the annexation, you know, that's still going to be three-hundred-and-two acres. So I don't know. We're all getting confused where now we're at two-hundred-and-eighty-five acres, and I don't know where all this variation is coming from. I guess we would like to know.
Well, I think Mr. Soren answered that, but if you want to answer it again, go ahead.
Just, I guess to clarify, you know, the sheet that we got from the county had the square footages of the property that was owned by the people that we sent the letters to. We received that from the county as well. We verified those areas to the letters that we received for protest to calculate the total areas of the land in the annexed area. The Highway 22 right of way is not included in this number, but all the lots that we sent out notifications to, the specific area that they own is included in the calculations. And this is the final number that we came up with once we received that.
Mr. President?
Mr. Stein.
Saying it another way, the fifteen percent that you calculated does not include, was not based on acreage that included the highway right of way?
Correct.
So if we did include that highway right of way, the percentage would be something smaller than fifteen percent?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Coling, is there an issue here with the Highway 22 right of way land?
No, Mr. President, there is not. We have been working with NDOT and informed them of the annexation. They've indicated to us they don't have a problem with the annexation. The annexation ultimately becomes effective when a map of the area annexed is filed with the county, along with a copy of the resolution. And at that time, we would also have the written consent annexation from the county, or from the NDOT, rather. And at that time, we would have all of those statutory formalities taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Anybody else wish to comment?
My name's Jay Wilhelm. I talked to you last week. I've got Dickinson Econo-Storage on the North End. I just want to reaffirm my opposition to it. I believe taking an area where you have an abundance of land, very few landholders, and you're also taking an area where you have smaller lots, and you explained why you were doing it last week, you know, but I just, I can't say as I really agree with that. And, you know, if there's validity to what she says about some of the landowners not being contacted, it was interesting. Today, I went down to the post office to get a notification from Catermus Lee &amp; Jackson on Consolidated, out in the country where I live, wants to run cable TV, high-speed internet, and great. I love it. But, you know, they sent me a letter, and I had to go to the post office and sign for it, a registered letter, just notifying me that they were going to do it, there were going to be survey crews out there. And all they wanted to do was notify me that there were going to be survey crews on my land. And that was done with a registered letter. I realize century code says it doesn't need to be done that way. But when you're taking a landmass that has very little people, or very, you know, large blocks of land, and the only way you can get this one area with these small lots and businesses, which make up probably, I don't know, if you'd worked the percentages, it's probably seventy percent of the people that are north of Toos and go to the paving company, you know, that's probably going to be the majority of businesses and people out there that are actually going to be affected. And it just seems, pardon the expression, but a little bit cheesy to do it that way. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Kirchen, Northern Improvement. I represent Northern Improvement. Again, I want to state, you know, that we oppose this proposed annexation and its current proposal. And this particular drawing that Susie showed you, that was mailed to me, was slightly incorrect. It was not mailed to me. I picked it up that night of that first meeting. And, you know, I only bring that up because I never received a letter of notification. So, you know, I was never notified. And I called the Bismarck office and the Fargo office, which is our head office, and they have also, the president of Northern also has not received a letter of this annexation. The only way that he knew that there was, that our property was being annexed was because I told him. And I told him through these meetings. So they also did not get written notification.
Do we have copies of the letters we sent?
She says we have a list of the letters that we have, or the list of the people the letters were sent to. We don't have copies of the letters.
But we have a list.
Yes.
Okay. We'll take more comments.
President Johnson, City Commission. My name is Mary Grove. We own and operate MGM Rural Sanitation. We provide services to any resident that requests our services outside city limits. And it's in an ordinance that we cannot compete, and we cannot provide service inside the city limits of Dickinson. And now, once you start annexing your, the lines of Dickinson, you will be taking away our customers. And we provide service to the majority of the customers and the businesses sitting out here. Have you considered what you're going to do with that? As you continue annexing, you will just, you will close a business. And is that your goal?
With annexation, it's not our goal to close businesses. Our goal is to have the city grow in a orderly, planned manner.
But I can't compete inside city limits, and I can't compete with the City of Dickinson.
Mr. Coling, are you familiar with that part of our ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President. I believe our ordinance states that, in general, septic systems are not allowed within city limits, but if there is not a current sewer line within two-hundred feet of a property...
We just provide garbage pickup.
If there's not a current sewer line within two-hundred feet of the property, then a person would not be required to build the line out that far to tie into the septic system. So there may be septic that exists farther than two-hundred feet away from the city sewer line.
With solid waste pickup, though, that would become the city's responsibility.
Correct. That's correct.
So I just automatically pull my containers away and lose all that business for MGM Sanitation.
Mr. Soren, do you, are you familiar with?
I did visit with Mr. Soren earlier, and he, at the time, what we did visit, we were talking about the south of County Road 40. He did let me know about that. And anything other than that, he wasn't sure that was at the time, was going to be processed.
I'm not familiar with the ordinance that would state they couldn't do that within the city limits, for sure, but it would be my understanding, once we take over the annexation area, you know, trash collection, snow removal, street maintenance, all of that would become our responsibility from the date of the annexation forward.
And so does the city have any plans on purchasing and buying the customers from MGM Rural Sanitation?
Mr. Coling, would we have an obligation to do as she's asked?
Mr. President, I do not believe so. The ordinance provides the properties within city limits will be serviced by the City of Dickinson. That would be one of the side effects of annexation, but it is not something that the city would be obligated to pay for, the customers of a private business.
And there has been some sort of precedent sent with this when you built the West River Community Center, and I believe that Journehams were involved with some purchase of their customer base.
No, their customer's base was not purchased, but some of their equipment was.
So as the City Commission and you are individual business owners, this is something you support. You support annexation of the city, which will hurt a small business of your city. So keep business in Dickinson is not really truly a model.
Well, really what you're saying, then, is that the city shouldn't annex any property if it's detrimental to any other small business? Is that what you're saying?
You should have a plan on what you're going to do to provide reimbursement for that company.
I have a question. Do you do both, commercial and residential?
Yes, we do.
I don't know the answer to this question, but over the last year or two, I know that this commission has approved a lot of rural subdivisions outside the city limits. Have you done any kind of calculation to see what the net effect of that is? Have there been as many added as what are coming into the city right now? There have been a lot of rural subdivisions that this commission has approved.
Right. We provided service for those subdivisions already.
No, but these are new ones, I'm saying, in the last year or two.
Which ones are you referring to?
There's a long list. Bang subdivision. I could get your list, but I haven't done the calculation.
The only new, really, subdivision, I believe, that's named out there, I think it's West, the one on East Highway 10. It would not have anything comparable to taking away our commercial businesses.
Well, that's my question.
Yeah. And so I think each city commissioner needs to ask themselves, you know, we are a small business. We provide employment for a few people, not a whole lot, but, I mean, we are a business of Dickinson. And as you annex and as you keep annexing, you will take away customers that are ours. In a small business, we are not allowed to compete against Dickinson.
May I address the council? We have been providing services for the last six years for MGM Rural Sanitation. We also are aware of a few other locations that may be planned for annexation. I guess what we're trying to ask right now is if there's going to be some type of future discussions held with us as to the effect if Lakeview West Industrial, some other locations are taken out of our, our commercial and residential business. This is a lot of revenue that we're having taken away. I don't think there's any other businesses that have restrictions on providing services within the city limits. We are tied to strictly outside the city limits. And what we're looking at is this continues to grow on this map. What are you going to do to try to help us out? Because we're providing the service, but we have no way of competing against the city. The city just comes in and takes over. There's got to be a mechanism put in place.
Your name, please?
Mark Grohl.
Go ahead.
You know, I don't think we have an ultimate answer for you, but this commission has looked at no other annexation. I will tell you that. Might happen tomorrow morning. But I'm not aware that this commission has looked at any other annexation. This was a unique situation that we felt we had to move on.
You're still taking quite a bit of revenue away from us.
I understand.
And I guess we'd like to have some type of remuneration coming back to us if that's what's going to happen. We have no ultimatum, other than losing these customers.
Well, you've heard the city attorney.
I've heard the city attorney.
Yeah. We have no obligation to provide you what you're asking for.
So much for cities supporting local businesses and small businesses when cities compete against small businesses. This is a mechanism because you're taking that competition completely out of place by putting us into a situation where we have no recourse in any way whatsoever.
Well, your objection is duly noted.
Mayor Johnson and the city commission gentlemen, my name is Bill Gion, and I'm a human resource manager at Wyoming Casing Services. Unfortunately, the owner, Steve Halverson, was unable to attend tonight, and he asked me to attend on his behalf. We did write a letter in opposition to this proposed annexation. There are some key reasons why we oppose it. I'm going to try not to restate what's already been stated in the essence of time, but we feel that the way the annexation was planned, it was very calculated and strategic. In essence, you stacked the deck with where you drew the boundaries so that you could be self-serving in getting it approved. These boundary lines could be redrawn. If you would oppose this, I think you could come back with a more favorable annexation proposal that would have overwhelming support. And we don't feel that just because you can do this, you should do it. Let me repeat that. Just because you can do it doesn't mean you should do it. There's a lot of complexities here, and I'm going to give you a little bit of insight. For those of you that know Mr. Halverson, he's been in the oil field for 35 years. A lot of the prosperity that we're seeing in western North Dakota right now is driven by the oil field. And Dickinson has been a beneficiary of that. We've been very good neighbors to the city of Dickinson. We employ close to 200 people. We have a multimillion dollar payroll, and we've paid our county taxes timely, and we will continue to do that. We don't need to be annexed to the city to be a good neighbor. That payroll, for the most part, has a direct effect on the city of Dickinson. I'm not saying this is a threat. I'm saying it as an observation. The oil field is watching what you're doing here. There are many companies that want to come to the Bakken and get in on this play, and they are going to watch closely to see how welcome they are to the surrounding area of Dickinson. It's not real conducive for an oil company to be in the city limits, but it's very conducive for an oil company to be near a city. If you go ahead and approve this annexation, and I know you have the power and it appears as if you've got the landmass, even though I think there's some real questions as to how that was done. You know, I'm not an attorney, but I've been in banking and I've been in different things. I think this process should have been done with certified mail. There again, you didn't have to do it, but you should have done that. That would have been the right thing to do, is make sure you got everybody contacted. If they've all been contacted and only 15% said no, I think you'd feel, you'd feel very confident. But the way I see it, if I sat in your shoes, there is an element of doubt as to whether everyone was in fact contacted. Mr. Halverson was contacted, but I suspect there's people that aren't, because I also made some phone calls to some landowners that claimed they didn't see the letter. I did not fax this to them. That's not my obligation. But they in fact said, what are you talking about? What letter? This was a, this is a person out there that owns land and she lives in California. She did not see the letter. Now, maybe you mailed it, but somewhere it went, it went amiss. So, I would be very concerned about that process. When you look at this from the standpoint of the oil field, and like I say, I don't mean this as a threat. It's just an observation. Marathon Oil is not that far out of Dickinson. Other companies are looking at coming to the western part of North Dakota, but they're not real excited about being part of a city. You know, if you start to go out and land grab, I think you're going to see a lot of these places that are going to, they're going to go somewhere else. Hess went to Tioga. They're a multi-billion dollar company, and they went to Tioga. You're going to probably see some of that where they're going to go somewhere else rather than get near Dickinson, and I don't think that's good for Dickinson. I think there's a tremendous amount of commerce. Matter of fact, I know, I mean, think about this. We have 200 people on our payroll, and I'm going to say, a lot of those hands, they make $25, $30 an hour plus time and a half on 40. And a lot of them bring that right directly to Dickinson, to the grocery store, to the rental market. If we lose that, if you push this, and I don't think that it's a threat, but if you push this through without due process, and you may think you've done due process, I think you're going to send a message to the oil field that's going to say Dickinson isn't really where we want to come. We're going to go close to Kildare. We're going to go close to Watford. We're going to go outside of Minot. We're going to go outside of Williston, but we're going to get nowhere near Dickinson. Marathon isn't excited about being zoned now if this gets passed, if all of a sudden that zoning extends out. You know, so I think that the process, although it was maybe followed legally, wasn't quite done correctly. And like I said, we feel that it was somewhat self-serving and stacked the deck in favor of it being passed. And when you really look at the economic impact, we may not pay a city tax, but we certainly support the city of Dickinson. And that's all I guess I really have to say on behalf of Wyoming Casing, who's been out there for 35 years.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm the senator for District 36, which encompasses the southern half of Dickinson and also encompasses the area of what you are considering to annex. I was contacted by some of the landowners in this area. I have sat behind that desk as a member of your city zoning board. I have been a county commissioner. I have sat on the county zoning board for 26 years. I, I have checked into the Sentry Code. I visited with Bismarck today. You have followed the letter of the law. That is correct. And I first would like to thank you for letting me address this to you, but I really have a concern with your procedure. Mr. Gion said it quite plainly, and I think another person did the same. When we have done issues with Stark County zoning, we have since heard five letters. I think that would have helped, but I won't get into the legal part of this. I'm more concerned about your ethical maneuvering and the courtesy of working with the people. You want those people to be part of the city of Dickinson, and yet you're starting out on the wrong foot. My suggestion would be that there is two things that you should look at. First off, Stark County is the governing entity for these people today. I visited with the chairman of the Stark County Commission today, and he was not contacted. I understand that you never contacted Stark County. I know you don't have to. I know what the law reads, but isn't that courtesy? Aren't we all citizens of Stark County? Isn't Dickinson part of Stark County? Isn't Stark County? Aren't we all one? Shouldn't we talk to each other? Stark County is going to lose about 92,000 in revenue to the, in taxes. And you, and I think at one of your last meetings, the Stark County Fire, Rural Fire Department, has talked about the revenue they're going to lose. Shouldn't we, shouldn't we visit about that? Shouldn't, shouldn't you, shouldn't you have had a meeting of all these people, these businesses? I know that you didn't have to, but shouldn't you have asked these businesses to come to a friendly meeting and discuss what, what advantages it will be to these people, that they would have sewer and water service and more, more fire protection and more police protection? I visited with one of you commissioners, and you said, well, we're already given police protection. You probably are. But have you ever had your police department and the Stark County sheriff sit down and talk about this and work out some kind of an arrangement to where maybe you could charge Stark County for doing some of these things? We're all citizens together here. We brag about how friendly and hospitable we are in western North Dakota, and yet you have some very hostile people because of the process. Now, I know that I can have a lot to do with the change of the process, and I'll guarantee you, today I started a new bill in the legislature to change that process. I cannot believe that the city has that much authority without talking to the people and to the other government agencies that are involved. I will introduce a bill to change that. If it passes or not, that's another thing, but I definitely will do that, and I already have a lot of support for that bill. That isn't issue. I'm not here to make any threats. I'm just here representing the people that asked me to speak for them. I would ask you to slow down. If you have to deny it tonight, please deny it. Start over. Work in a slow process. Work with these people. I think you're doing the right thing, and I think the majority of these people would accept it if it was done in a more courteous and more hospitable way. And with that, I just thank you on allowing me to have an input tonight. Thank you.
Senator, I, you know, we had a meeting two weeks ago where it was an open discussion, and I felt we were doing many of the things that you asked that we do. I'm not aware that the county is unaware of this annexation process. And you being in the Senate know very well that all we can do is follow what's prescribed to us under, under state law, which we did. And, and you heard the city attorney say that, that Mr. Soren and Mr. Kessel personally went up to that area and tried to see as many people as they could. They went above and beyond there. I don't think this has been done in a closed and unfriendly manner. Now, I'm happy to hear that you are going to introduce a bill to have some changes. I would also suggest in that bill that instead of a 25% opposition number, that you raise that to a simple majority. Because if it was a simple majority, we wouldn't be doing what we're doing now.
Exactly. Exactly. And I, well, that's one part-
But I mean, when, when Mr. Gion and others say, you know, you stacked the deck, you drew this in such a way, well, of course we did. I told you that two weeks ago, that, you know, we can do the math, but under the present state law, if we take that annexation right up to just the south part of that property, and if Dickinson does continue to grow north, if we try to annex that little block, only 25% of the landmass can prevent it from taking place, even if 65% want to come in at that time. It won't be majority rules. If it was majority rules set, we would be doing tonight what you'd like us to do. But, but the law is, is written in such a way that a small minority can control that land. So, the city may never have this opportunity again unless there's another whole big chunk of land that, that is contiguous to that, that would, would come into the city.
I don't disagree.
You know, I mean-
I don't disagree there.
We have to follow the laws that are passed by the legislature.
Correct. And I agree with you with the simple majority. I agree with that, and I think that would take away just what you said, the maneuvering that you had to do, because then you would at least go to the people. If we changed it to where it was a simple majority of businesses and landowners plus the mass, if we looked at both those areas to where then you would, you would be meeting with people and talking to people and convincing them that it was the right thing to do. I don't think, I think Stark County is not here complaining because they apparently know they can't do anything about it. And, and they probably be gladly, I can't speak for them. They probably would be glad that you would take over all the services that are, that are out there. But, but I just, my suggestion is, is that you should be visiting, should have went a little, worked a little harder to try to visit with these people and call them to a simple meeting. Just calling them to a simple meeting. This is traumatic change for many of these people. The numbers, the numbers is one issue, you know, taxes higher or my special assessment's going to go up. That's another, that's a total other issue. The county does something, then a subdivision, those things happen. But it's just the idea of talking to these people, and if they didn't want to come to the meeting, fine, then you served your obligation. But just to talk to those people, and you still can do that. You still can start all over, and you still can talk to these people and convince them that you're doing the right thing. Because we have great potential here in western North Dakota, as Mr. Gion has said. We have great potential, but we can do it, we can sure do it a lot better if we all work together. And city and county government need to work better than, than we have. And I served eight years, and I probably was part of not working as well as we could, but we did a few things. We changed some things, and we need to continue to do that. We're all, we're all together.
Yeah. Well, I'm not aware that the county's opposed to this.
I don't think they are. But they also know that they can't do anything about it. And that's the law, and I, and I understand that, and they do too.
So, we're being criticized for following the law?
You're being criticized for not making the extra effort to visit with these people and talk to them about what you're proposing to do, including, all the government agencies should be talking to each other. How is it going to change? How is it going to change? Instead of these people calling the county road department, what do they do? What do they call the city? It's simple to you, but they are not city residents. They're county residents. Now, that will change. And just the simple little procedures, the little, little list of things that this is the way city does things compared to the way county does things, some of those things could be discussed in a meeting. Just, just very simple.
Mr. Nodlin, you alluded to the fire, rural fire district. Communications has taken place between our two entities, and in fact, there is a process and a way to make them whole as to what the lost revenues that they will experience. So, that communication's already taken place. You know, a lot of these things do, do not necessarily show up in the public eye. The communications has taken place.
I know, I know it has taken place. I also know what the number is. I found that out. But again, I think that happened because there was protests. That communication could have been done prior to all of this, is my suggestion. Prior, we all know that the tax base, you're in the business to know that, as county commissioners there in the business know that. How is our tax case going to change? What, what mill levies are going to change from one, from city to county? All the entities involved should have been talking to each other prior to this. That's, that's my suggestion. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Dale Potteroff, and I own Advanced Custom Contracting. I'm just an army of one, but all I'm going to say is, some of you were elected and some are not, and the last person that tried to change anything, like the time zone, I think you're better off leaving things alone. But I would, I would say that if you would go in, once a pavement and the sewer and the water is up to 40th Street at twos, I would guarantee you that every one of us in the pink, when that is done, today would sign that we would be willing to be annexed in. It could be 10 years before that. We're going to have all the services that you guys are saying we're going to have. Why should we be paying now? I would sign that paper right now, once it is up to 40th Street, that, and I bet you 90% of the people that are in the purple would do the same thing, but not as of now. of now. Because we have no idea. You don't have a deadline on when this is going to be. All the rest of these services are going to be up to that street, do you? Have any idea when that's going to be?
No, we don't have a firm date on that.
Could be 10 years. Could be 15 years.
Man, it could be a lot less.
But I would guarantee you that if you took a poll of all these people that are in the purple here and send them a letter, when all of the rest of this is developed, we would sign off. And then, you wouldn't have to worry about us holding out. I think that would really be the fair way to do it.
If the state law was different, I personally would agree with you. That if it was a simple majority, instead of a 75 percent majority sign on, I think the city would take that risk that down the road, we would get the buy-in. But do you understand the state law? That if 25 percent are more protest, then they win. I mean.
They would have drew this line straight up, and I guarantee you, them two farmers would have said no. And then, we wouldn't have a conversation, instead of us crooked lying, you guys. And it's just as crooked, I think, as the people sitting behind me at the desk in front of me. That's all I got to say.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
You know, we've heard that a couple times now, that option, I don't want to call it an option, but, you know, about improving up to 40th and then coming in with it after Is there, this council here, is there an addendum that you can add to annexation that could do what they're asking? Would you, I don't think you could apply it to business owners, but you'd have to apply the addendum to the property owner and state that if they sell this property, that does not change the fact that they would elect to become part of the annexation, once the development has gotten up to 40th Street.
I'm not sure I quite understand the question, but you're asking about whether we could have them sign an agreement now to not oppose annexation sometime in the future?
Until the develop, until it's developed up to 40th Street. Right. We've heard it a couple times, and I'll say, we'd be willing to go in if, you know, once it gets up there and so on, because we don't know if it's going to take five years, two years, 10 years, or whatever. Their concern is paying the extra taxes and so on if there are, without getting up there at that time.
Centricode specifically precludes a government from requiring a property owner to sign an agreement not to oppose annexation sometime in the future. If annexation is going to be done, it needs to be at a set time. We can't bind future property owners to either waive or not waive a particular statutory right to oppose annexation sometime in the future. So, that option or that potential is not there by design in Centricode.
Mr. Nadle, you might want to add that to your bill.
Other comments?
Hello, I'm TJ Haroff, representing Cola. Just got a question for Mr. Kohling, if I could, or to at least clarify, so I understand. It's basically a done deal. Is that correct, relative to the 15 percent of the landmass? You know, we talk about 25 and 75. You know, 97 percent of the people are against it in this deal. I think, just doing the quick math, you know, 3 percent are for it. It just happens to be 85 percent of the landmass. But this process is basically, through the letter of the law, it's a done deal. Is that correct?
Well, I would say there are two requirements of Centricode that we're bound by. One is, we have to go by landmass. We can't go by the number of people or the number of property owners.
No, I understand.
So, landmass is required. And the other thing that we're bound by, by Centricode, is the 25 percent rule. There has to be 25 percent of property owners by landmass to object in order to preclude annexation.
Yeah, I understand that. I guess my, maybe I didn't articulate it very well. But my question is, is the process, you know, we're talking here, do the commission vote on it? I thought I understood you that the first resolution that went out, if the 25 percent was obtained, then it would be killed, for lack of a better word. Is this process basically a done deal?
Well, the commission will still have to decide upon whether to accept Mr. Soren's calculation of the area. But in the event that the commission doesn't find the 25 percent have protested, then annexation is effective.
Okay. And then, just from a legal standpoint, it is frustrating, and I hope Mr. Nadle will put that in, that, you know, certified letters should, in my view, the way it should be handled. Is there any burden of proof that is relative to the law or Centricode to make sure everybody got the information? And the reason I ask that is, it's come to my attention last week that my objection letter was not part of the total objection letters. I wrote the letter myself. I addressed it. I mailed it. It was not there. This morning, now I called, and they were gracious, and they went to Sean's desk, and evidently, they found it. You know, I want to make sure that my letter is part of, I know it doesn't matter now, but I want to make sure that it's part of the objection process. And where's the burden of proof? Did these people, did we truly give them notice? And who's to say we did? Who's to say we didn't? The argument is, you know, I mailed the letter. Why wasn't it in the first thing? I'm not saying anything did anything wrong. I'm just saying, those are the type of things that happen, that it gets buried, it falls behind this. Whatever happened, that is an issue that may be the burden of proof. And as we look at, you know, I view this as a done deal. And that we're up here really not wasting our time, but certainly wasting your time talking about it. But I think if there's any way that we could slow the process down and look at it, I would certainly not, I would certainly be in favor of annexation if those services were out in that area. So, that's, just wanted to try and articulate, and I don't want to waste any more of your time. And thank you for your time.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
You know, it is a subject that affects a lot of people up there. And can we go back and send, to make sure that all of them buy certified mail, have received this here? This change this notice? I mean, that's a concern out there. Was it sent out certified? Even though, you know, losses, we don't, but maybe we should, just to make sure there isn't somebody missing that we haven't contacted, that haven't had a chance to respond. Personally, I'd have no problem sending out another letter certified, so that, I don't know if the numbers would change or whatever, but.
The ultimate decision you'll have to make is whether or not 25 percent of the owners have filed written protests. Centricode, as it's designed, does not allow for a longer period of time, longer than 30 days, in order to file that protest. But when you make that finding as to whether or not 25 percent of property owners have filed written protests is somewhat at your discretion.
Another comment from Mr. Haroff. You're never wasting our time.
Other comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Mr. Kohling, you talk about a time limit, you know, the 30 days and so on, and that we can't change that. If this is defeated to allow us time to send out those certified letters, they can be brought back at another time, correct?
You would have the opportunity to pass another annexation resolution. Yes, that's something you can do at any time.
The process starts all over again, though.
That's correct. You would start with doing a new resolution, defining the new area to be annexed, sending out letters, waiting for that protest period to expire, and then holding another hearing. That, yeah, you would be starting at the beginning then.
Let me ask this question. Of the people that are not in the purple, I guess, if they were all here, if they were here, they would have been notified, I guess. It's just my concern that if we have some in there that haven't been notified, that show up non-purple. Do you know of anyone that hasn't been notified today? I mean, they know about it now, they certainly would have time to. But again, my concern is if there's anybody out that hasn't been notified or knows about it, whether it's by certified mail or not, that they had an opportunity to contact us. That's a concern that I would have, I guess.
Mr. Steiner, I think your concern is very legitimate. And I think the process is kind of messed up. You know, and like I said before, you can do this. By law, you can do this. But should you? Absolutely not. You should take Mr. Nadle's advice and take a step back and redo this. It's very possible the numbers are going to be exactly the same or very similar. You may not, because of the way you've drawn your lines, you may have still got what you need to accomplish your goal. But if you go forward on this basis, you've totally lost the trust of many, many people as a commission. Because it's very apparent, you know, we've made contact, I can think of at least one landowner, and I'm not going to put them on the spot, but I have communication with them, and they honestly said, we didn't ever get a letter. So, you're on the right track.
Have they really responded to us, and they oppose it, or?
No, I don't even know. You know, I tried to be fair in the process. I didn't go out there and, we contacted this landowner because we know this landowner. They don't presently have a building on their lot. We've had an interest in acquiring that lot, so we had the contact information. And as per Mr. Halverson, I made a phone call to follow up. And in all honesty, this woman is in her 90s, I think, and she might be in a nursing home. I don't know if it went to her power of attorney or where it went, but in researching it the best I could, I talked to the son, who's in his 60s, and he said, I've never seen anything like this. And he said, what's going on? And I said, well, your best bet is to contact the city commission. And that was last week that I called him, but I didn't say, vote yea or nay. I just said, you know, you're a landowner out here, you should know what's going on. So, you know, on a personal note, I was part of a school consolidation down in Mont Regent. And I sat on a school board and had to work through a consolidation. And when we started out, we had such opposition, you could have never imagined we'd get it accomplished. But by being patient with the process and patient with the people, when it was put to a vote, nearly 90 percent of the people in each of those communities approved the consolidation. And that helped me greatly as a board member going forward. I've been on that board down there 10 years. And when you can go forward with that kind of support, it's only going to make it better. What's the hurry? Are you afraid you're not going to get it later? Should we act out of fear? Fear of not getting something later that we can take now? That sounds bad to me. That sounds kind of like stealing to me. You shouldn't do that. You should back up, send the certified letters, have the meeting George suggested. I don't think we're going to come in here as warmongers. We want to hear about what the city services would be. We want to get a timeline for when they might get out there. We want to know how it's going to affect our property tax. We just don't want to be clubbed over the head and dragged in, and then we come up conscience and we're supposed to be thrilled about it? The process isn't working well, even if it is the law. And I don't think, if you voted it down, I don't think anybody's going to look at you and say, well, that was silly. Yes, maybe you voted it down because the process wasn't quite what it should be. Are you going to get in trouble? Mr. Johnson, if you would send the certified letters, is somebody going to stand up and say you broke the law? I don't think so. What you're going to get is you're going to get a lot more cooperation from the people that need to see that. We understand, and you were very transparent in what you said a week or so ago. But I'll go back to that. Just because you're transparent, if somebody comes up and tells me something and they're honest, that honesty by itself doesn't justify what they're doing. Every landowner is deserving of being contacted. And as TJ said, there is a burden of proof here. There is a burden of proof. When we have an election, we watch those ballots. We certify those ballots. This is kind of like an election. Granted, it's tied to the landmass, but you still need to know that every one of those landowners was given an opportunity to vote. And I have a feeling, the way the numbers are coming out, we won't get 25 percent. I could be wrong. But what bothers me the most, it isn't a win situation, Mr. Mayor. No one wins. This is about doing the right thing. And it can be a win-win. We can either defeat this and go back and reestablish that boundary. And like Mr. Potteroff said, when you get that part developed and you're right on the nose of where we're at, I believe Dickinson will continue to grow. I think there will be growth to the north. There will be other opportunities for annexation. But you come in here and pound this down our throat, what kind of a message is that sending to the bigger population? I'm talking about the guys that sit in offices in Houston and other places. They're not interested. They'd rather go to Tioga. Because they're so thrilled to have them within three, four miles of the town up there, they'll do anything for them. We want them here in Dickinson. We want Dickinson to grow. So, I think, Mr. Steiner, you're being extremely wise in what you're suggesting. I think it's very valuable to back up. And the end result might be the same, but the process will make us all better.
Just got one quick question. Do you have a list of people you received letters from? If Mr. Haroff's letter wasn't received, I guess I'd like to make sure mine was received. Bill Andrews has four lots. He'd like to make sure his was received. If there's any issues, you know, we want to make sure they're cleared up now. The gentleman I just followed makes a really good point. I mean, you know, county line's not that far away. Maybe they should just start, maybe the oil companies need to start moving that way, across the county line. Maybe we'll just send the message, we don't need them in Dickinson. Slow down and think, guys.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Walt Smith from Cattermasley in Jackson. And at the risk of becoming not very popular with the crowd this evening, I must speak on behalf of the landmass, landowner that owns the majority of the property up there. He has a plat, which is, the approval of the plat is based on the condition that this annexation goes through. And any delay put into this annexation, you know, if we go back and resend out notice and start this process over, this client, along with at least two other landowners I know of, are, approval of their plat are going to be held up by this process. So, I'm just letting you know that as far as that landowner goes, and I believe we all know who it is, they are opposed to dragging this out, and they would like to see this annexation go through. One more comment, as far as the oil field goes and all of that, I believe there's a company that, that client, my client is also speaking with up there, and they're working on a land deal within that area we are annexing. And they realize that the annexation's being put through, and they are, that's the reason they're looking at purchasing the properties, because it is going to be annexed into the city. That's probably a 40-acre piece of that property. So, not necessarily, I wouldn't agree 100 percent with, you know, the fact that if we annex this property, you know, everybody in the oil industry's going to head north. I'm not sure that's the case. You know, I just thought. You know, just thought I'd let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Tracy Houck, representing the Houck Family Trust. We have five lots up north behind Andrews Outdoors with two commercial buildings. We're opposed to the city annexation, so just do not see any benefit to being annexed. We've got our own community well. We've spent a lot of time and money on our own septic systems, which, and our taxes will increase, I'm sure dramatically, with absolutely no benefit whatsoever to us. That's all I got.
Mr. Sarn, of the letters you sent out, did we get any back that weren't from the post office that said they weren't delivered?
No, we did not receive any back because of addresses or, or non-delivered from the post office.
Okay.
And Mr. Haroff's letter was part of the 15% that--
Yes, it is.
It is in there, and it is part of the 15.54% that opposed the annexation.
Correct.
And Mr. Sarn, of those who didn't reply, was there anyone that you were surprised they didn't reply? I mean, in that you would have reason to believe perhaps they weren't notified?
Of the lots that were shown, I guess I have no reason to be surprised at the responses we got. I suspected those would be, the ones that didn't respond, I would have no indication as to, that they would have responded any, any different or in opposition either. I guess I wouldn't know that. So it doesn't surprise me, the map that we've got in front of us.
Any other comments?
Oh, I can try to make a couple here, Mr. President. I'm sorry.
Mr. Jackson.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, let this gentleman speak.
I was just looking at this map, and one of the businesses that opposed it, I see is in purple, and that's Champion Chemicals. And then this Berwick Second, 10 acres, they're putting up a new building there. And I wouldn't, I would think that if they opposed it on the original building, they would have opposed it on this one, but maybe they didn't get the letter? Probably because it wasn't, I don't know, the land deal was probably just done, but it was a farmer that earned it before. But Champion Chemicals is building a building on that right now. So that'd be 10 more acres that would be in there, that you probably didn't figure out. Because I see Bedmark, they're right across, exactly to the east of Toos, and they bought that 10 acres in there, and they're putting up a building there right now, and I, I don't know why they would be for it on part of it and against it on all of it, probably because the letter went to another person.
I think Mr. Sarn can answer that.
That one is a 10 acre. It was a plat that went through several meetings, and through that whole process, the discussion of annexation was made very, made them very well aware of the desire of the city for the annexation and moving forward. So the development of that 10-acre tract, they were very well familiar with the annexation, and we had several discussions through three, possibly even four, planning and zoning meetings, as well as personal meetings after that to discuss the annexation situation.
Walt Smith, KALJ. I represent Berwick Second Edition and, or Fourth Edition. It was a, approval of the plat was contingent on annexation for that property. So I don't know that those property owners could be against it unless they didn't want their plat approved. So I believe it was a condition of the plat approved.
If I may address the Commissioner. My name is Sandra Koontz, and one of the questions I have, I understand there is at least three plats that were approved subject to annexation. And my understanding, there is a provision in the century code that prevents requests for change of zoning to be conditioned upon annexation. So I'm curious what explanation we have for those conditions upon those plats.
Mr. President, if I may, the requirement of century code states that a, approval of a plat cannot be made contingent upon a written, execution of a written agreement not to oppose annexation in the future. That is not what the city has required. The city is entitled to place conditions upon approval of plats, including the condition of annexation. City is not, does not have the power to force a landowner or developer to execute a written agreement not to oppose the annexation in the future. So it's really a timing issue. We have the power at the time of approval of a plat, we do not have the power to bind future owners or future developers not to oppose the annexation if the city would seek it at some point in the future.
And was that developed by case law, or is that your interpretation of the statute?
That is how the statute reads. To the best of my knowledge, it is not, there are no reported cases on the statutory provision.
So that's your interpretation of that statute?
Correct.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? In Mr. Coling's written explanation of the annexation process, if you agree that Mr. Sarn has properly calculated the, those amounts that oppose, there's a motion here, and I'll read the motion, that says, "To find that the owners of less than one-fourth of the territory proposed to be annexed have filed written protest to annexation, and that the territory described in Resolution Number 37-2010 is hereby annexed to the city limits of the city of Dickinson." So if you find, I'll see if I get this right, and Mr. Coling can correct me. If you find that indeed these have been calculated correctly, and you still agree with the annexation, you would move this motion and vote in favor. If you're opposed, of course, you don't know. Did I do okay with that, Mr. Coling?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. President.
So, before I ask for a motion here, I'll just open it up to the Commissioners and invite you to make any comments that you might have.
Mr. President, this is probably one of the most sensitive issues that I've seen in 10 years come up. There's questions on whether people got their letters, there's questions on whether people received the right maps. I think we have done the right process according to the law and so on. But I'm just, you know, I'm kind of hesitant to go along with this for the simple fact that, I mean, if we can slow down again and take a look at this here, do the mailing, I don't, I don't know how much extra cost there's going to be on the city's behalf, but I don't think it's going to be much. We went through the expense of getting the information the first time here. I don't know if, I think the only thing we're probably losing is some time here, and I don't know if time is an issue for the city here, as it is so much for the developer. But I would have no problem, I don't know what we need to do to resend this at this time, take the step that they're asking us to do, and just take it, you know, it may be the same, again, like they stated, 15%, 25%, but at least we know everyone has been contacted, has had a say in it. And at that point in time, you know, I think we follow the letter of the law and the concerns that they have.
I agree with you, Carson. I think the main concern out there, other than the current property owners, is that of the developer. And part of the reason that the annexation process went in was because that was a requirement that we had to make sure that the development would be to city standards, and so that it wouldn't come back to haunt city taxpayers at a later date when we eventually annex it and have to do the improvement. So that was one of the key contingencies there. But it seems that from the developer's standpoint, your indication has been that you'd like to develop it to city standards, whether there was annexation or not. So the annexation, if I remember right, was just our second level of assurance that everything was going to be to that level. And so, I think if you go without the annexation and to not further delay the development, you have to take that clause out of the approval for that plat. Is that being out loud here? Is there a way to do the development without the annexation until we can get the annex, everybody on board with the annexation? I'd hate to see the development not move forward because it is going to bring a lot of revenue to the city, it's going to bring a lot of business, it's going to allow us to keep on top of the development so that we know where our city boundaries are moving, and that we have the space available for new businesses to come in town. It's a very important development to our community, moving forward and taking advantage of our current economic situation. And I don't want to lose sight of how important the development is to the overall community. What I want to know is that can we move forward with the development if the annexation is off the table?
I think that's another question that we'd have to turn to our attorney, but I suspect the answer is, to that question is no.
Mr. President, you have previously approved the plat contingent upon the annexation of the property. If you do find cause to revisit your approval of the contingencies that you placed upon the plat, that would be within your discretion to do.
But the developer can't proceed at that point?
If you approve the plat and remove the annexation contingency, the developer could proceed with the plat as it has been approved.
And if you don't remove that contingency, but defeat this motion this evening, the developer can't move at all?
That's correct. If you defeat the motion and do not remove the contingency, the developer cannot move ahead. That's correct.
Could we amend the resolution to delete certain parts of the annexation?
Not for the annexation resolution. By century code, you've defined the area that is entitled to notice, and that's the area that you have to act on determining whether or not 25% of the landowners have objected or not. You can, you could find that there has been a defect, and that you can't certify the numbers that Mr. Sarn has developed, but then you would have to start the annexation process from the beginning again.
But we could remove that contingency from the developer's resolution that we did and allow development to move forward as we clean up this issue and move forward with it.
You would create, create the obligation to have a separate action by the board, by a separate vote to remove that contingency.
And I think that'd probably create a dangerous precedence. What we went through to approve that 163 acres, and what we were looking for, I think that would be remiss, so if we just remove the annexation requirement.
Mr. Coling, if, if we did as Mr. Altman is asking about, and we then approved the industrial development without the annexation requirement, and then we came back at a later date and by resolution said that we wanted to annex that 163 acres, the developer would simply just have to oppose it, and then it would not come into the city.
That's correct. The developer would retain the right, as the developer retains the right now, to object to the annexation.
And, and in my view, that would not be in the best interests of all our city residents to have that large block of land right out next to the city limits, not be part of the city. Mr. Steiner.
Mr. Coling, if we elected not to proceed with this tonight, what are we talking about for time? Time limits here to the mailing? I mean, are we looking at 30 days, 45 days?
I'd have to research that out a little bit. I believe if you elect tonight not to certify the numbers that Mr. Sarn has developed, you would be finding that there's been a defect in our annexation process. And to come back then and figure out, to redo the annexation would require us to restart the process, so that we would probably be looking at about six weeks. You originally passed the resolution September 7th, it's now October 18th, so that's probably about the same timeframe you're looking for, if we would come back and restart the annexation process.
Mr. Coling, could we table the action pending new notification via certified mail?
Century code, in this regard, states that the meeting in which to determine, to hear and determine written protest to the annexation is the next meeting after the annex, after the 30-day time period in which the file of written protest occurs. So, your determination, as I read century code, has to be made tonight. This is the next meeting after that 30-day period expires. It's also important to note that when we send out the notices, and when that, the notice is published, that's when that 30-day time period begins to run. And people have to, landowners have to file a written protest within that 30-day time period. If they file on the 31st day, then by century code, that is not counted in the written protest percentages. It has to be filed within that 30-day period, and has to be filed in writing. I don't think there would be a procedure that we could defend in century code if we extended that out and allowed another notice period to come in, and allow others who may not have protested originally to now file a protest beyond the 30-day time period.
Mr. Sarn, how, you know, there's a limited number of lots here. How confident are you that you sent a letter to the owners of each lot?
Well, I'm very confident that we got the addresses for these lots and the notices were sent out. You know, and, and some of them are definitely out of state, so I'm sure we did send notification to them, and we received none of those back. Whether they physically received them, I can't answer that, obviously, but--
But I mean, the post office, to your knowledge, did not return any of our letters as undeliverable.
Correct.
You know, I think as Commissioners, you have to kind of make a determination in your own mind if, if, whether or not those landowners actually received the letter. I mean, the evidence would, would look as if they received it. Now, we have no way of knowing if the letter is going to someone that's 21 years old or 91 years old, or--
I think that's a really, I think it's a really important point, because we get sent out certified letters and not get those back either. And then how do we know? And then how do we know? People could choose not to sign that receipt. I have a question from Mr. Soren. Can you give us some kind of a feel? I know that you and Mr. Kessel met with a certain number of landowners and tenants, lessors, lesses. Can you give us some kind of a feel for how many businesses you met with up there?
Of, of the, the businesses that are occupied, I believe we met with over ninety percent. There may be one or two that we didn't actually talk to. The land that didn't have buildings on them or the, there are several lots that have storage units, we didn't meet the first go-around with those. I will state, though, after we sent letters out, I was invited to come up to a meeting and had a meeting with several of, of the people in the area north of Fortieth Street. And we did have a discussion about annexations. That was a second opportunity that, that I was physically onsite and met with property owners in that area, realizing that's a lot of the local ones and if there's any out-of-state ones, they probably weren't in attendance to that. But, but we have met with the majority of them on a couple of different occasions, so...
Other discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner.
At this time, the only thing that's holding me back is the certified mail that their request can be sent out. I know where the city, with the way it's grown and so on, the annexation, I think it's inevitable, whether it's north, south, east, west, community's grown and it is the city's job to make sure that those are grown in the right way and being developed the right But the only thing that's slowing me down on approving this tonight is the fact that we don't know one-hundred percent that everyone has been notified. And if it takes a certified mail and we gotta step back for sixty days, like I said, it may not change anything. But I think that it'd probably be a little more receptive by everyone north of Fortieth that if it comes back at fifteen percent, I don't know much more we can do than follow the intent of the law or the law, not the intent, but the law and go. But to me, the only question right now is certification of a mail.
My second question to that is, if we do that, and that would be fine, is how do we do it in a way that doesn't further impede our being able to start developing that area as well? The further out you get from this and you've got the developer, and then from the developer, you have the people that have already committed that want to move into this area and bring their businesses and employ people. How do we prevent a house of cards and for these certified letters, we, we lose the whole development over time?
I don't know how we protect developer on that, except I don't know if I'm willing to err on the side of going ahead right now with the entire annexation.
So do we go back to our approval for the developer and our only option is to remove the annexation clause, right?
Or to make him wait a couple more months?
Right.
And I think that's, that's where we'd be headed.
Jackson, what was that?
Or to make him wait a couple more months while we redid the process. But I'd, I'd still like some discussion on what do we do if we send out certified letters and we don't get that? What, what, how do we react to that?
We just take, if they had the opportunity to sign and refused to sign, we'll just take that as being a non-response.
We won't know that.
Well, they're given the opportunity. They have to be given a certified or a registered letter, has to be presented to them, or they have to have the opportunity to go down and pick it up. So it'd be a non-response if they didn't want to sign and accept it.
So where has that gotten us? That's where we are today, probably. I'm, I'm trying to understand how that's going to help us.
Because the numbers are going to be the same, no matter how many certified letters come back, because the way that the plat is drawn out, it's still going to be less than twenty-five percent. That's your point?
Well, that point, but also, we're wondering today if certain people got the letters. We'll still be wondering if we get some back that the return receipt wasn't signed. We'll still be wondering, won't we? Or am I missing something?
Except that we know we, we sent it out certified. If it doesn't get back, that probably means that person along with that address, they are not updating their address or forwarding address.
I think it's pretty obvious that we're trying to be sensitive here, sensitive to, you know, the feelings of the businesses up in that north end up there, as well as to the developer of that hundred and sixty-three acres, as well as the Lyons addition, et cetera. I'm not sure that delaying it by sixty days is going to create an overt amount of problem in the, in the whole scheme of things. And I'm just wondering if that's not the best process, regardless of the fact of if people sign off on a certified letter or not, at least we made the attempt to follow over and above the process, the legal process prescribed by the century code. And heck, we're heading into freeze-up anyway, so you know, you're not going to get much dirt work done in the next month and a half.
Mr. Smith?
You want to argue with me on that?
If I can. We all know that the process has taken a while on this hundred and sixty acres, as is. And there were some big players. It was BG's well service. I mean, it's, it's a no-brainer. At this point, we're looking at buying a quarter of that property up there and, and moving their facility up there. And because it took, you know, the process, five, six months here, not that that's, you know, your guys' fault, but they decided to move out of town and they're putting their facility elsewhere. The developer of this hundred and sixty acres is talking to another outfit that's looking at taking, again, a quarter of the land, bringing in several hundred new jobs into town. I can't tell you who it is, but it's oilfield-related, just like the whole discussion has been. And they're, they're looking to move in fast track and I can almost guarantee that we push this off another couple of months and that player is going to move out of town as well, from what I hear from my, my clients.
But they're not going to move out of the area. I can guarantee you that the industrial commission's announcement is, you know, prevalued influence Stark County here in the very near future. So whether they locate in this area or someplace adjacent, you know, outside the area, I guess we're just...
Or to mine, not like BG's. I mean, if, and I'm not saying, again, I'm not threatening anybody or, I'm just trying to say that a delay could cost this guy to go out of town, these gentlemen go out of town. I'm not saying it will or won't, but it could. There's, there's no doubt about it. Thank you.
And if you remove contingencies off one plat, I would plan on removing them off of all three that the contingencies are on, to be fair, of course.
Right.
My name is Lisa Call. I work for the Dickinson Press. I'm not an attorney and I'm not a developer, but just looking at the map that was handed out, is, am I reading this correctly? These are the, the areas that do not approve the annexation. Is that right?
That's correct.
So if all of this is approving it and this is further north, am I reading that correctly? Why not just do this first and cut the line here and move slowly and, and as that gentleman said, you know, have, have the services meet up here, you know, all the city water sewer, all that infrastructure, and slowly grow it up to those people? I, I don't understand, I guess, why all of this has to be put in with this big chunk that all these people are already approving. So...
The thinking, Ms. Call, is if we go just to that street that, that you suggested, yes, we could, we could do that. But the thinking is that then if at a later date, since we have this area that is developed and developing further, then it'd be right adjacent to the city limits, but it would be outside the city limits. If Dickinson continues to grow north, if pressure is on the north side there, that if we went to the landowners under present state law and said, "We'd, we'd like to annex you. We'll do this by resolution." All it takes is twenty-five percent, that all it takes is a small minority in there to vote no on that, and then it can't be annexed. And the city might start to go around it. And the concern is that, you know, you don't want to ring your city in with a development that doesn't have city services. And that was the discussion we were having with Senator Nadler and that I wouldn't be, personally, I wouldn't be opposed to what you've suggested and others have suggested that if, if the law was that it was just simple majority, that if fifty-one percent of the group approved going in or fifty-one percent voted no on it, the majority would win. But in the case of zoning under state law, the minority determines whether or not you go in. And I think it's in the city residents' best interests that we avoid trying to ring ourselves in here. If, if this was undeveloped land directly north of this hundred and sixty-three acres, we wouldn't have an issue here.
The only, only reason I'm asking, I personally live out of town too, so we have our own, own sewer and, you know, we're not part of the city. But I think if, you know, people were able to see that infrastructure would be able to be provided in less than ten years, I mean, ten years is a long time to be paying taxes and not having full services of the city. You know, if people were able to see that they were being provided a lot quicker than, say, eight or ten years or even five years, would they not be more likely to be open to the idea of being annexed into the city? I think that's a huge concern for people, is having to wait that long and they're paying taxes and not able to have the same services as everybody else.
You know, there are so many points that I'm not sure they're worth belaboring, but I guess we have to repeat some of them. The water and sewer services will not be paid for until they're there. It's a separate bill. It's a separate billing system. But the city property taxes do not pay for water and sewer. The enterprise funds and the water bill we get each month is what pays for water and sewer. So we need to keep that in perspective. You know, we've heard a lot of voices tonight. I too would be in favor of somehow delaying this so that people can feel a little bit better about the process. I am a little bit hung up about the certified letters because they're going to go to the same addresses that the letters went to three or four weeks ago, or whenever that was. And we're going to, we're going to really not know much more. Can you help us with that?
Well, I would just offer this. When I worked at the bank, you know, and we'd send out registered or certified mail, if that letter is not signed off, you will get that letter back.
I understand.
You know? And in not signing off on that letter, I think, you know, basically, you know, when we did foreclosures or anything like that, I mean, that was our legal ticket, if you will, to say we've done everything we can to properly notify that individual of the action. A lot of them don't, in that situation, don't want to sign off because they don't want to cooperate. You know, to me, what, what Mr. Steiner is suggesting puts a lot of integrity in the process. And I don't, I don't think it's, it's unreasonable to think that most, all of them would respond by at least you'd be getting a receipt back saying that that letter hit its target. From that point, none of us can dictate who responds and who doesn't respond.
I agree. That's my point.
You know, so, you know, and what Mr. Altman had suggested earlier, and, you know, we're not, we don't want to stand in the way of the city being able to develop what this gentleman wants to develop. You know, I really believe that if you would take a step back and look at it, the better decision this evening is to let this annexation plan die and this gentleman can proceed with his development. He's not going to vote no on a new plan. He's already in it now. Why would he vote against himself? And get that developed and bring it to the north and, and do it in a way that's a lot more, "Come join us." And I think you may very well see that. You know, the other concern that I didn't mention earlier was, you know, the waste product that we have up in that, in that subdivision isn't your typical waste. You know, I think there's got to be some environmental things considered when you're going to start annexing stuff like that to the city. I'm not saying we're dumping oil down the drain, but you've got shops and you've got a lot of things up there that, you know, you might want to assess that before you go running in there and saying, "Come aboard." I mean, I, I would be concerned as a citizen of the city, if you're going out there, what exactly are you allowing that particular subdivision to put into the system? Does anybody know that? Has that been addressed? I mean, we believe we're doing it right. I don't think we're, you know, knowingly going out there and polluting things, but we're all on private septics. So there's a lot of reasons to slow down. We don't want to stand in the way of this gentleman, but there's a better solution, even if it's five years from now, Mr. Mayor. It doesn't have to happen immediately. For you and Mr. Nadler, might be successful in the next legislative session and we could get to a fifty-one percent. It just has a bad feel. It really does. And I do thank you for your time and patience.
Bill Andrews, All Seas and Storage. I would like to invite you people, the members of the city commission, to actually come up to that area up there. I've been kind of taking care of the master well that runs thirty-two lots, little shut-offs and so forth. And at least you have a, a good idea of actually what is there, what maybe, maybe isn't there. And extend an invitation to you to maybe get together and spend fifteen, twenty minutes, come on up there, we can show you the shut-offs, we can show you how that well works and, you know, the different things with the water. I know you can look at sewer sys, excuse me, sewer systems and so forth, but I think you might have a better idea of actually what's going on up there. And maybe some of you have already been up there, possibly, but definitely if you haven't, before you make some of the decisions later on or whenever, maybe take a look at that area and see actually what is there now and what may be coming later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Any other comments?
Once again, my name's Suzie Knudsen from Andrews Outdoors. I would just, in order to kind of feel good about this, I would just like to know from the developer if, if they're in favor of all of us being pushed into this, all of our businesses being pushed into it so he can develop. I feel that some sort of deal was probably made that we'll plot your land if you annex it to the city. It's the way I feel about it. I, I just want to know if he feels good about himself knowing that, you know, there's twenty of us businesses opposed to this annexation when we're being forced and there's one person wanting to develop land. We're all for him developing his land, but we're not being, we're not happy about being forced in. And I would just like to ask that developer or whoever's speaking on his behalf, if that developer is happy with us businesses being forced into city limits because he is plotting and developing something.
I will attempt to speak on behalf of the developer as far as that goes. The developer, it was not his idea to be annexed in. He bought that property and proceeded to plat it and had no intentions of plating it. He was going to develop the piece of property per county standards because it was in the county. And during the process through planning and zoning in the city commission, it was the city that put that contingency on the plating process. city that put that contingency on the plating process. So, does he feel good about everyone being forced to annex in? I would say, no, he probably does not feel good about that. Does he feel good about himself being annexed in as well? I know he would rather not be annexed in, because it would be cheaper for him to develop the property. But in this case, to develop it, he really doesn't have a choice. He is getting annexed if he's going to get his plat approved, so I don't know that it's necessarily the developer's fault that this is happening to the other 20 of them. So, no, I don't believe he does feel good about it, but is he willing to let his deal go to the wayside, so that everybody's happy? No. At this point, he's pushing for the annexation, because that's the only way he can make money at the way it's going, and so, I reiterate, he's pro-annexation, wants to see it passed tonight, so that he can move on and start selling property.
And we're all in favor of the development, like I said, you know, we're all in favor of that development, but when the city can't give us a date for services, I just wanted to know if we were all on the same board together. Because, just because they, just because you go to them to get your land plotted, shouldn't give them the right to force annexation upon all of us, including yourself or the developer.
Right, and my client may agree with you on that point, and he may not, but because he tried to do it in the county in the first place, and annexation was not on his mind, I would imagine he would agree with you. I might make one statement, as far as getting those services up there. I've started putting together cost estimates and drawing up plans already to extend services all the way up to that north side of the property, as early as next year. The one big player that they're talking to about purchasing a quarter of the property is talking about purchasing a chunk on the north end. So, this thing, if it does happen, and this all works out, it's going to happen fast, and they're going to be looking for water and sewer up there immediately, next spring. And so, like I said, I've already started looking at the plans and putting together costs, to shoot that water and sewer all the way up to the north side of the property. So, if all goes well, there'll be services up to you guys on that end of the property next year, if I'll optimistically speak. I don't believe it'll be five or 10 years, you know, as some people are afraid it may be. The only way that's going to happen is if this whole thing, this whole oil thing crashes in the next two months. I do believe you'll have services up there soon, in the near future.
But none of us have any true answers, even for you, that that's going to cost an awful lot of money to get that put in, and I believe that the city should be paying for some of this, because you're talking BG Services, we know a lot of them top dog guys, so to speak, that come in and shop in our store, and I don't believe they will have their business in city limits. And who's going to have to pay for that? You know, BG can probably pay for those services, but what about the other people in that developed area? You're going to have a hard time getting that developed, when you're, when all this sewer, water, gutter, all of this, somebody has to pay for it. You, as a developer, or whatever, you ain't got that kind of cash, it's got to come out of somebody's pocket.
Right, and I agree, and we've already been talking with the city, they are going to be paying for a portion of getting the water and the sewer up into that area, they're going to be installing a lift station on their dime, so the city is putting their funds into it. The developer will be flipping probably half of the water and sewer infrastructure. The big player that they're trying to get in this development on the north end is also, as part of the agreement, has agreed that they will, or it's in agreement, that they will also pay for their share of the water and sewer utilities that go in around their property. So, I believe in the case of this development, we've, the city, the developer, and the potential landowners already, are talking about splitting the cost of it. And the balance of it will be assessed to the lots within that industrial park. So, you residents on the north side, I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Soren, but to get utilities up to, say, the north side of my development, I don't believe will be to any cost to you folks up there. And maybe that's incorrect, but a direct cost, anyway.
Well, I think initially, that would be a correct statement.
Right, I mean, once we shoot them up into, you know, to your property, and that's a whole nother ballgame, I mean, of course, you will probably assess some of that cost. But getting them up to the south side of your property, I believe is, we're going to do that for you, and I believe it's going to be real fast.
The point I just wanted to make was that, you know, and you answered that quite clearly, was, I just wanted to know, with plotting that 163 acres, if the city says, "Well, we'll plot it for you and let you do it if you annex."
And that's exactly, that is how it went, yes.
Didn't want to.
Saying anything bad about the city, that's how the process went.
Let's make that very clear.
It shouldn't have been that way.
Yeah, that shouldn't have been a contingency on you, that you have to annex just because the land gets plotted.
Correct, well, and some of these guys can probably tell you, "I fought it best I could." From the first time they started talking about annexation, we let them know that we were not, because, yes, as a developer, it's going to cost us more for the roads, more for the water, for the sewer. You know, otherwise, we could have went in there, "You guys put your own septic in, so I can sell it to you, I don't have to put infrastructure in," so it would have been cheaper to us, but it's just, yes, it's the way it's worked out.
I just wish that the City Commission could see what they're doing to all of us, and make it a win-win situation, so that you can proceed with your development, and once you're developed, your area gets developed, then if they need to come after us to annex us, then fine, annex us at that time. But I see no point for it right now, and somehow, you know, like George Nadle said, there should be communication, somewhere, I think there should be a win-win situation for all of us.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
As to the issue of the North Industries plat, that is absolutely the case, that annexation was a requirement of the approval of that plat, and I think our mayor has been very transparent, and very vocal, in saying that that is our intent. We realize some won't agree with that, but that absolutely was the intent, because we think that's the best for the entire city of Dickinson, to put that requirement on that development. And we've been very consistent about that, since that plat first was brought before this board, even before it was, as it was at planning and zoning, we discussed that at this board. So we've been very consistent about that. We realize some won't agree, but we've been very transparent about that.
But when you can stand at the corner of the Walmart parking lot, and you can see the end of this development, and you can see the first business in your development, that is not a very big space, and to allow that subdivision to be developed with, to not city standards, only to have it incorporated in a short amount of time, and then have to go back in and remove septic systems, and incur the expense as a city and as a taxpayer to incorporate it back into the city, it's not three, and four, and five miles out of town, it's right on the edge of a current development in the city. It's right on the corner of practically where Walmart ends, and again, from that corner, you can see your development from there. It's not like you're four, five, six, and seven miles out of town, and that things will never get that far out.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
You know, I want to put this thought out there, we've heard Mr. Soren say that he and Mr. Kessel did meet with 90 percent of the businesses up there. I know I was part of a conversation with Mr. Soren and Mr. Kessel early on, saying, "We need to do this, we need to get some personal contact with the businesses up there before legal notices go in the newspaper." We're hearing tonight a desire to have more discussion, and we're hearing that loud and clear. I think the real question before us is, though, that if we derail this tonight and start over again, are we going to draw the boundaries in the same place that we have? Because if we do, I think we know what the result is going to be. If we choose to draw the boundaries differently, so be it. But it seems to me, that's the question. If we start all over again, and draw the boundaries the same as they are now, and we can have more meetings, and we can discuss, and, you know, everybody's brought up the question of the water and sewer, we can't guarantee anything. I too agree with Mr. Smith, I think it's going to happen pretty fast, but we can't guarantee that. So are we really accomplishing something? And are you thinking? I'm willing to do it, if it'll make everybody feel better, but if the result is the same...
On the North Industries, with them developing right adjacent to the city, I think absolutely the right thing to do is, if that's really where they want their industrial development, that should be part of the city. That is the right decision. Because your property then is adjacent to their property, if you were starting all over and putting a development there, we would require the same thing of you. We would require that that be developed into the city. That, I think, is in the best long-term interests of the community. If we delay this further, we're going to cause harm to the North Industries developer, we're going to cause harm to the city, because if we lose this development, or lose a portion of it, we will, we could lose some jobs here. If we can move forward here in a timely manner, Mr. Smith has indicated that, to the best of his knowledge, water and sewer services will move to the very northern part of that development very quickly. So the sooner they can develop that, the sooner we can have the water and sewer services there. You know, we've heard your concerns, we want to do this in the most cost-effective and least disruptive way that we can. Because this is an industrial development, the city can also look upon that as economic development. And so when Mr. Smith said, you know, he believes the city will participate in some of the infrastructure costs there, I'm in favor of that, because in this case, by helping with the infrastructure costs, we're going to bring more jobs to the community. And we're going to have a development that sits, that right now would be sitting on the edge of the city limits, will be built according to city standards, rather than county standards. And where cities can get into financial problems, if you allow development outside your city limits, but near the city limits, to standards other than city standards, at some point, if your city grows, and then those come into the city, now it is the city taxpayers' responsibility to bring the infrastructure up to standards. So the point here is to do it right the first time, that's the most cost-effective way to do it. And again, we can point to examples in our community, where during past oil booms, we haven't done it right. And at some point, it has cost, or it will cost the city and all their taxpayers, extra dollars. Now, we know that there are going to be some additional costs to you, but we also know, at least this present group of commissioners, and I think I can speak for all five of us here, again, we'll try to do this in such a way that it is the least cost to you. If things go according to Mr. Smith's vision here, as he said, you would have those services right up to the southern boundary of your property, and not be assessed for any of those Whereas without this development, if you were coming into the city, you probably would be assessed for those costs. But because we have an industrial development here, it's much easier for the city to accomplish this in that manner.
And you can see the writing on the wall, as close as this development is to the city, and the way that it's going to be developed, that it's only a matter of time before you're going to be a part of the city, and this is going to be your one opportunity to do it in the most cost-effective way. If we do it the other way, then you're going to, you are going to have the burden of more cost. And one thing to keep in mind, too, as we move forward with the annexation, is there's lots of other parts of Dickinson that weren't annexed. I know the home that I live in used to be part of the country. Part being annexed and having city services, the police service, fire, water, sewer, street, gutter, MDU, increased the value of my home. And I'm definitely glad to have those services, and it definitely impacted the resale value of my home, being part of the city. And I think, long term, when you look at your business, when you look at this on down the road, and when you go to sell your business, it's going to increase the value of your business, to have it a part of the city, to have the city structures available. And it's a long-term investment, on behalf of all the citizens of Dickinson, to make sure this development's done the most cost-effective way, but ultimately, it is going to impact your business. Right away, you're going to, yes, feel the burden of more taxes, but I think in the long term, you're going to see an increased value for your business, because then you're going to have your commercial development within city limits, and that is almost always more appealing to local business developers coming in.
Mr. Baker.
Good evening, my name is Galen Baker, I work for Stark Development Corporation, off to take the chance that Walt took. If you stand back and look at this development, long term, if we indeed, this moves forward, as Walt has said, the main client is going to create some 400 jobs, possibly, on 40 acres, one-fourth of the new properties being part of the North Industries' annexation, let's suppose that the other 120 acres, or so, only results in 800 jobs, total, count in the 400 already. All those people are going to buy Coca-Cola, they're going to need roads built, they're going to need storage, they're going to need sporting goods, they're going to need all those things. They're going to buy them, they're going to buy them from their neighbors, from the people that are already nearby there. It means more business for everybody. Suppose half those people move their family here, two and a half people per household, times 400, you've got another 1,000 people living in Dickinson, or in the immediate area. That is economic development, that is the way that you grow a town, a community, an area, in a very good way. The economic impact of proceeding with this is very positive for the community as a whole, it's very positive for the businesses that will be neighbors to that development. Long term, you know, 10 years from now, this is going to look like a good piece of history for the city of Dickinson, if you proceed.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Langwell.
I thought campaigning against time change was going to be tough, it's not like tonight. I sat down before I, when I got the minutes of the meeting, or the outline of the meeting, and started to think as to what the process would probably be the most valid. And I looked at the number of businesses out there, and many of the businesses enjoy the benefits of the Dickinson market, economic market. These, a lot of the construction, the products that are sold out there, the uses of the businesses out there by Dickinson residents, have benefited the businesses for a number of years. And then from a planning and development standpoint, in broad scheme of things, I think that we have to take a look at the hard decision down the road, and maybe that's just the planner in me, that things cannot look beyond six or 12 months, and what's it going to look like? And I remember the 1980s specifically. six or 12 months, and what's it going to look like? And I remember the 1980s specifically. And I'd be, think we'd be somewhat remiss, based on what Mr. Coling's outlined for us, is the process that we have to follow. I think we might be remiss if we didn't take action to incorporate this thing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lambrou. Anybody else?
Well, I think everybody's had a chance to speak their minds, and it's probably time to have the motion. Would one of the commissioners care to move the motion that Mr. Coling has prepared for us?
Mr. President, I'll get the motion on the table. And I'll read it as it's been presented. The motion would be to find that the owners of less than one-fourth of the territory proposed to be annexed have filed written protests to annexation, and that the territory described in Resolution Number 37-2010 is hereby annexed to the city limits of the city of Dickinson.
That's motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have the motion, the second. Any other discussion by commissioners?
Yeah, I have a number of things I want to say. I'm making the motion not, I don't want anybody to think that we haven't heard what's been said tonight. I'm not convinced we can accomplish much in delaying this. I just don't believe the outcome will be any different. I feel badly that people feel they weren't contacted well enough. But I also hear what Mr. Soren said. It's been said that we might not be welcoming to oil companies. Well, I know there are people on this board who have, in the past, offered financial incentives, as a city, offered financial incentives to members of the oil industry. And I know that's going to happen again in the future. So I think we're welcoming the oil industry. I have sympathy with the folks who have the solid waste business, and I would be willing to investigate, I don't know what we can do, but investigate some transitional period that we could accommodate a transition with them still providing solid waste for a limited amount of time to cushion that blow. You know, I think that probably later this evening, as it gets later, we're going to approve a $100,000 request to our airport authority to, with taxpayer money, to build a hangar at the airport. At present, the folks involved with this annexation won't be participating in paying taxes for that $100,000. But I think that the oil industry enjoys the benefit of us having a good airport. I think there are pheasant hunters that come in here and probably buy things in Dickinson, and they use that airport. I only bring that up because it's one of many, many examples that I think we could cite, that this is the right thing to do. I feel bad that there are some negative feelings here tonight. But in my heart, I know this is the right thing to do. So with that, I'd urge us all to vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Anybody else?
Mr. President? I don't disagree with the entire annexation proposal that has come before us. The only thing that bothers me, and this is just one item. Outside of that, like I said, I agree with this 100 percent. It's good for the city, eventually down the road. I think it's what we probably need to do. The motion to find that the owners are of less than one-fourth of territory proposed to be annexed have filed written protests, to find that the owners, that's what I want to do. And I don't want to assume that the owners are less than one-fourth, you know, have filed written protests. I actually want to find it. And that's the only issue that I'm stuck with now. I can see where this is all going to go. I would not change the boundaries if it comes up again. I would still with it. My only problem is, is we haven't got a solid response on whether our letter's reached everyone. Again, we can assume, but it says to find that the owners are of less than one-fourth. And I'd like to find, and if it comes back 15 percent, I'm going to vote to approve the annexation, the entire annexation. But I just feel comfortable finding that we've contacted everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Anybody else?
Well, we have the motion and the second. Are you all done with discussion? We'll proceed to vote then. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Mr. Lambrou?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. We have a 5:50 timetable, agenda item.
We're late.
And that's to hear an Alteg presentation, and Mr. Berg and Ms. Olson. And this is regarding the master plan of the wastewater treatment facility.
Are you planning?
Thank you.
We'll take a recess after this presentation.
Okay.
We'll let you go.
Okay. Thank you. We were here about a month ago to give you a status update, where we were at, talk a little bit about what we had done the previous year. We had a couple new faces on the commission. Wanted to let you know where we're at in preparation for our final presentation of preliminary engineering report for the proposed improvements to the wastewater plant. Tonight, we'll talk about first introduction, a brief intro to what we're going to talk about tonight, preliminary treatments, siphon improvements, basically the list of items that are proposed improvements moving forward in more detail than we've talked about them before, and finally, a summary of our costs and a schedule moving forward. First of all, you've seen this slide before, but it's a good overview on where we've been and where we're going. Sometimes these projects sort of feel like a marathon. It's a big undertaking, so it's good to keep in mind the process as we're moving through it. About a year ago or more, we started master planning the wastewater plant due to the projections and growth, looked at existing conditions out there, future conditions, future projections, looked at the existing infrastructure and the condition, and had some alternatives, and made some recommendations. That stuff has been accomplished. Out of that, we got a selected alternative proposed to the city, and the city decided what they would like to undertake moving forward, which brings us into the design and construction portion of the project, which includes preliminary engineering, getting into a little more detail on some of these high-level things we came up with in the master plan. Then step two is the actual design, coming up with plans and specs. Step three, bidding and contracts, and then the construction process. And all that goes into the completed project. Again, right now, we're on step one, just finishing that. Project overview, you'll notice this is a little bit different layout than what was in the master plan. As we moved into preliminary engineering, we started thinking how we're going to lay this out in plans and specs. And we start normally at the front end of the plant and move through. For each item, we're going to talk about a few design details, and then go through a more detailed cost estimate. Just note, we've kept a 20 percent contingency at this point, and 20 percent placeholder for things like engineering, administration, legal, you know, bond council, anything like that, as far as those things go. So stepping through pre-treatment area, we have some minor improvements, master lift station upgrades, aeration pond upgrades, rapid infiltration basin construction, and then the French drain pump station and river monitoring station.
First improvement is the pre-treatment building, an inverted siphon. The pre-treatment building receives the flow coming to the plant, removes debris along with grit, sand, and gravel. From there, the flow goes to an inverted siphon which carries water underneath the Hart River. The main problems here, we lacked emergency power at the pre-treatment building and hydraulic constraints in that inverted siphon underneath the Hart River. Our recommendations include manual transfer switch at the pre-treatment building, new piping going to and from the inverted siphon, and several manholes in that piping too as well. The estimated cost for this improvement is $245,000. The next improvement involves a master lift station. The master lift station receives the flow from the inverted siphon and conveys it to the aeration basin. The main problems with this facility, it lacked redundancy. It also had no provisions for emergency power and didn't have enough capacity to handle the future flows. Our recommendations here are three new submersible pumps, which will provide redundancy and that ultimate capacity. And we're also putting an emergency generator here and recommending that we move the valves above grade.
From an engineering standpoint, what is redundancy?
Redundancy is so we can have a failure in one of our main pieces of equipment, and it won't affect the necessary operations of that facility. We spent a lot of time looking at ways to upgrade this facility here, where it can be well-maintained and easy to operate. The preferred alternative is the existing wet well. We will locate the pumps on that side of this facility. We're going to notch out this wall and make this part of the facility part of the wet well. Then all the valves and piping that are maintenance items are moved up to the top level, where they're easy to access. The main benefit of this alternative is that it eliminates the confined spaces that were associated with the existing pump station. We have a new force main going from the master lift station to the aeration basins. The total cost for this alternative, or for this improvement, is $2.3 million.
Next, the aeration ponds. The purpose of the aeration ponds is to treat the organic loading. We've talked about hydraulic loading or the ability to move water. Organic loading is the ability to treat the strength of the water and to meet effluent limits. And our main avenue for that at this plant is the aeration ponds. Currently, there's two ponds. However, the equipment in those ponds, again, lack redundancy. As Mike said, if something went out of service, the city personnel cannot operate the aeration equipment for the old air raider on the east side. So we needed to solve the redundancy issues, since obviously there's always wastewater coming in, and we need to continually be able to treat that. And then also, moving forward to the future, being able to meet the organic loading requirements and provide capacity with the projections. So our recommended solution is to add an aeration pond to meet that capacity issue. And we look at a blower-diffuser system for all the aeration ponds, which will give us redundancy, a new blower building to house those blowers, and then some operational improvements with control structures and transferring water, and also the emergency power addition, which, if power's lost at the site, you can continue that treatment. Quickly, here's the layout. We're utilizing the site to the north of the two existing ponds. That's where that footprint lays out. And then a little bit on the proposed blower building, we wanted to look for ease of maintenance, reliability of equipment with redundancy, and energy efficiency moving forward. And this is really the concept most of the plants are going to with aeration equipment, blower-diffuser type. The only equipment you have is diffusers. In fact, with city personnel, we visited some sites, talked to some operators about this concept. And all-encompassing, earthwork, building, diffusers, blowers, everything, this alternative is three, just over $3 million, 3.4 million. Rapid infiltration basins, this is a new process at the plant. It's the construction of a new process with a pump station, which is the dot, and rapid infiltration basins, the rectangle. The main purpose of the rapid infiltration basins is to meet an effluent ammonia limit that we can't currently meet now at all times. The problem with the existing system discharges directly to the Hart River. At times of low flow, the facility is under constraint and can't always meet that limit. And as flows pick up and the storage becomes more limited out there, that problem will just increase as we go forward. So the solution is the rapid infiltration, basically discharge to the land instead of the river. Again, we have seven basins with a dosing tank and a completely automated system. Can show you the proposed layout. This is, would be the seven basins. And our biggest constraint here was to stay away from an area we found of a clay confining layer here. We wanted the silty sand layer, which is why we opted, selected that area that's shown.
Is there still room for expansion in that area and down the line, where you have those seven positioned, or is that maxing that area out?
The city owns property actually further south of even where we're showing on here. We would stay away from this area. There's area around here. These areas were suitable. And there's also area to the south that would be suitable as well.
Okay, thanks.
I guess the only area, you can see the two dark dots here, that we are staying away from. And again, initially, we, you know, you have an overland flow pump station. We're hoping to utilize that, but based on where it's located, the elevation difference, we will have two new pumps and a vault for dosing those basins. And when adding in engineering, and again, 20 percent, we're at $3.9 million for this portion.
The French drain, excuse me, is located on the east side of Cell 4. When this cell was constructed in the early 80s, they developed a seepage through the dike on the east side of that cell. I understand there's an old coal seam. All coal seams are old. But there's a coal seam that runs underneath that cell towards the river. To deal with this in the early 80s, they laid a French drain along that dike, and then the seepage through the dike goes to the Hart River. Now, the problem is, is that the Health Department has indicated that they are going to classify that as a continuous discharge, which would mean that it has to be continually tested to make sure that the city's in compliance. To deal with that issue, our recommendation is to install a pump station and pump the seepage back into Cell 4. It's a little difficult to see, but the French drain runs along the east side of Cell 4. And in the red, we have a new piping pump station, and then we would pipe right back into Cell 4. The cost for this improvement is estimated at $91,000. The river monitoring station, currently, the city is required to monitor river flows to calculate discharge rates from the two basins, from Cells 3 and Cell 4. There is a concrete weir that was installed in the early 80s that's used to measure flow. This weir is tilting at about a 5-degree angle. We've reviewed this site and the stretch of the Hart River here with the USGS, trying to figure out what the backup plan will be if that weir falls over. We've identified several sites where we can develop- We've identified several sites where we can develop flow profiles for the Hart River on fairly short notice. So, our recommendation for this issue is to do nothing at this point. That concrete weir may last for two years, but it may last for 15 years. When it does go, we have a backup plan in place.
Just to summarize again, taking all those costs in today's dollars, $2,010, just over $10 million, then projecting forward another two years at 5% per year, it's just over 11 million, and that includes, you know, 20% contingencies like I mentioned, engineering, legal, admin. And just to remind, our $2,009 from the master plan for the construction improvements was $9 million. Then bringing that forward to $2,012 and adding in the engineering, admin, legal placeholder again, we're actually at $11.6 million, I believe. I didn't write that number down, but so we're fairly close, you know, a little bit under those original projections. And the schedule moving forward each year again is color-coded, so we're right in the preliminary engineering report concluding in October 2011 is slated for design, different milestones for design, and approval with the health department, and advertising towards the end of the year with awarding the contract in early 2012, beginning construction continuing through 2012, and concluding in 2013. And that's all we had. If you have any questions?
A project like this, is this large enough that we're going to attract a number of general contractors to bid, do you believe, or will we be just looking at a couple of bidders?
No, depending on what the bidding climate is, I would expect that you have a large number of contractors. The last project we bid out there was the hydraulic improvements project, was about a $900,000, $800,000 project. Our two low bidders, one was from Billings, one was from Minneapolis. We're going to attract a lot of attention with this project. We'll get good competition.
When you get...
Oh, go ahead. I was just, so, you know, it's a pretty depressed construction market out there yet on a national basis, and by the, if that remains the case, and we have quite a few bidders, I would think there's a reasonable chance that your 5% inflation rate might be overly conservative, I would think.
And to add a little, you know, 20% contingencies at this point also may be overly conservative, but just moving forward, we want to make sure...
I understand that. I mean, you want to be conservative here, but there is probably some reason for optimism that it's, the project will come in when it's finished at less than $11.6 million.
That is our hope.
Well, that's all of ours. Mr. Altman, you had a comment?
I do. I guess as you're securing the bids and then securing the contractors for this, are you putting in place in those contracts some guarantees or assurances that it'll be completed in a timely manner, and if they go past certain dates, are there some ramifications? How does that work out just to protect our city on timeline and completion and making sure the job's done and done on time?
You bet. All of our specifications have a substantial completion date and a final completion date that include the provisions for liquidated damages should they not meet their, you know, dates as per the contract. So, we have a very tangible way to hold the contractor to those completion dates moving forward, so.
Okay. I want to follow up a little bit on the mayor's questions. Have you bid a project with some of these same elements in the last year that you're pretty confident of unit prices and all?
The spring, we bid a project with the blower-diffuser type work, and then also piping and earthwork is the main portion of that rapid infiltration basin, and we have seen very competitive bids.
So, you've got some recent history?
Very, yes, yes, just this last year.
Second question, I know as you're working week to week, we've had some change in staff in Dickinson, obviously, in the last weeks and months. Who are you working with closely right now in city staff?
Jeff Breziden and Sean Soren.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So, then the next step now is you're going to start the actual engineering work?
Yes.
Design work.
We like to think that we've actually been doing engineering.
Come on.
Design work for the actual...
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, I said, I worded that poorly. It's been a long meeting. Okay? Anything?
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation and your patience. We'll take a five-minute recess. We'll come back to order, and we're going to go to Item 4C. This is involving the Theodore Roosevelt Regional Airport, and Matt, did you want to make a formal request at this time?
President, John Chiswinski, Commissioner, so thank you. I know at the previous meeting on October 4th, there were some questions about the request I was going to be making to Dunn in Billings County. At their meetings, Billings County was very responsive to the request. However, they want to wait until we have actual numbers for the hangar and come back and make a request at that time. That was really the only concern they had was they thought we were a little late on our construction costs and just wanted to make sure that they were able to provide an amount sufficient to support this hangar. Dunn County was a little bit more difficult cell, and they did not take any action on it, and they don't expect to take any action on it at their November meeting as well. And at this point, that's all I have. There were no questions from Dunn County concerning the hangar. I know they are in a difficult time with the oil activity in there, and they had quite a bit on their plate at that time. But just one other thing I'd like to note, that the airport did receive two more base aircraft and a third transit aircraft that's going to be occupying space, so now we are extremely tight on hangar space for this coming winter. So, the hangar is proving to be needed, very much so, and I would make the request for the $100,000.
And that's, you're requesting a grant?
Correct.
And the hangar, would the airline that's providing passenger service, would they have kind of first priority in terms of overnighting planes?
I believe so. We haven't officially gotten a confirmation from them, but we would like to see them because of the reliability that we would be able to offer to the passengers.
With the hangar, and if the airline does overnight, tell us again how that may improve our chances of getting the, how many plane...
10,000 deployments or boardings.
Right, boardings, yeah.
The airline, anytime that they feel it may be cold, they may take that aircraft to either Sydney or Williston, and then in the morning, when they fly back down, there could be fog, fog or any type of weather and mechanical issue, and that, and the airline's going to go, they're going to hop right over Dickinson and go down to Denver so they can, either one, they have no opportunity to land in Dickinson, or two, they need to get the plane fixed, so they need to get it to Denver. So, they will fly us. That leaves us with how many passengers stranded now? In September, we didn't have a flight where there was, the morning flight where we had less than 20 passengers on the plane, so if we're, if we're stranded an average of 20 to 25 passengers, we are now doing a domino effect, and that's delaying passengers off other flights as well because denied boardings have priority on next flights, and it ultimately causes a backup and it starts sending passengers to Bismarck, Rapid City, Fargo, Minot, wherever, and it's passengers that we lose. And as we approach this last quarter, we are very close to our 10,000 deployments, and we want to assure that we get there every year, just, not just this year, but every year, and having that hangar and that additional reliability will assure that we get there every year.
For those of us who aren't pilots, if you have fog, I'm gathering that the conditions for taking, or the requirements for taking off are less stringent than the requirements for landing, so...
Correct. Yep, that is absolutely correct. To land, you need at least a 200-foot ceiling and a half-mile visibility at the airport, and that's with any airport in the state. It's just a normal ILS system, instrument landing system. To take off, you only need a quarter-mile visibility. You don't have to have a ceiling requirement, so...
Okay.
This morning's a perfect example. They would have never been able to have flown in this morning, but we did have at least a quarter-mile visibility, so they were able to take off, and those 27 passengers did get down to Denver this morning.
Mr. Chairman? If we were to grant, or provide the grant, what would be the source of our revenue?
Mr. Kessel and his memo here has recommended that we use the hospitality tax receipts as a funding source, and we did, I think, two weeks ago, we did talk about that, and if I remember correctly, we were thinking that our year-end cash balance was going to be around $650,000. So, the fund is healthy. In my opinion, this hangar would qualify as a project that could be, the hospitality tax receipts could be the source of, or the funding source.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we provide a $100,000 grant to the airport authority for the construction of a hangar.
And could your motion and then direct that the hospitality tax be the funding source?
Exactly.
Okay. That's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you guys very much for your generous donation, and the money will go to a very good source. Again, thank you.
Mr. Corley, in Mr. Kessel's absence, I'm not sure which ones you're supposed to be introducing and which ones I'm supposed to be introducing. Are you introducing Item D?
I don't have any other information other than Mr. Kessel's memo on Item D. I'm sorry.
Okay. Item D is a reclassification request for utility billing clerk job classification. Is there anyone from city staff that's going to speak to this?
President, Commission, I'm Aaron Prowse, Chief Operator at the Solid Waste Department. This request was brought forward by Tiffany Messer to an administrative assistant position. Since she has been hired, the job duties are no longer an entry-level scale operator position. She's doing a lot of documentations, filings, and things to that such order. She's more so of an assistant position versus just an entry-level operator.
Mr. Prowse, besides documentation, can you give, I guess, some other examples of...
She is recently doing all of the deposits and cash flow that's coming through the solid waste department. She's currently doing all the commercial account database. It was, used to be done down here by a utility billing clerk at City Hall. That currently has transferred out to our facility. She is also working in regards to all of the recycling information that's going on. She's preparing a lot of the PowerPoints and things to that order that I present at that committee. She also has done a lot of the research in regards to setting up a website for our department to move forward.
Any questions by commissioners? We'll note that the Civil Service Commission has heard this and is recommending approval. I did speak to City Administrator Kessel and asked him if he too was recommending approval, and he told me at this time that he really does not recommend approval of this request. Do you have a different understanding of that?
When I did have discussion with Mr. Kessel, he did recommend approving it to a utility billing clerk, as also the Civil Service Commission approved it as a utility billing clerk level, not even administrative assistant level.
Well, I spoke with him just a few days ago, and again, he told me that he did not agree with this action. And I guess I'm a little hesitant to, really, to vote on this until we would get a chance to hear from him.
Okay.
How the rest feel. But I think there's always a little, you know, anytime you move a position, I think all the others or many others in the system look at that move and say, if that position can be upgraded, then so can mine, and I think we have to be very diligent when we do move a position, that we feel very comfortable that, yes, the duties really have changed, the requirements have changed, and it's very much in order. I really would personally, I'd like to hear from Mr. Kessel in a public sense, how he's really feeling about this.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would agree with that. At this time, I'd like to see why he is not recommending, recommending an approval.
It's, not that we will do it or won't do it, but I mean, I think it's kind of hard when he's not here. What do the rest of you think?
Well, why don't we just delay it for a couple of weeks until Mr. Kessel is back?
We'll just, we'll carry it over till the next meeting, and then, I think that'd give you time to, you know, talk with him too, and...
I can revisit the whole situation with Mr. Kessel.
And your indication when you spoke with him was that he wanted to move forward? Was at least the impression that you were...
He said he was fine moving it to a utility billing clerk, but not to the administrative assistant, which was requested.
Oh, okay.
The Civil Service also did approve of it to move to a utility billing clerk level.
So, this was a, this is what was requested, would have actually been like two steps up? And this is one step up?
It would be at the same level as the entry-level utility billing clerks down at City Hall. It'd go from a grade one to a grade three.
Go from grade one to grade three?
Correct.
Under this request?
Correct.
Do you know what the debate was during the Civil Service Commission meeting?
The biggest debate was to whether it be an administrative assistant level or a utility billing clerk.
That was the only argument then, was necessarily her performance or anything?
No, no.
It sounds like she's a great employee that you've got.
She is.
Doing a whole lot of things for you right now. And what's your gut? What would you like to see?
I would like to see it moved to the administrative assistant level. I'm fine with going to the utility billing clerk level. This position, before she even filled it, should have been moved further up than where, than entry level, due to the fact that there was more going on than that just scale operation.
And administrative clerk is primarily scale operation?
Yes.
Well...
For the solid waste department.
It might be very appropriate, but a couple of weeks isn't going to hurt, is it, Aaron?
I can hold it for a couple of weeks.
Well, I don't think we have to make a formal motion to table. We just, we'll just carry it over to the next meeting. Item E, weight limits for trucks. Mr. Corley, that one probably is one that you can introduce.
Yes, Mr. President, I'll take that one. The proposed ordinance before you establishes a penalty scheme, regulatory scheme, for overweight trucks on city streets. In basic form, allows our police department to impound a truck that appears to be overweight for our city streets, and take that to the Baylor Building, have it weighed, and make sure that it is within the weight tolerances as provided by state law. It does adopt, as well, the penalty scheme that is imposed by state law, so will be equivalent with, with what the DOT, Highway Patrol, is enforcing on other North Dakota roads as well. Police Department is going through some training with the NDOT to learn how to recognize trucks that are overweight, and how to effectively weigh them, and take care of that process as well. With that, I'd let Chief Rumel or Captain Dossinger make any comments they wish to make as well.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission. Mr. Coling is correct. We are in the process of training one officer with this responsibility. We have a training session coming to Dickinson next week. That's going to cover size, weight, and weights of trucks. It's going to be held at the Law Enforcement Center. We're also working with the Law Enforcement Training Academy in Bismarck to send one of our personnel to Bismarck for a two-week portion of their academy. They will just strictly deal with enforcing weight regulations of trucks. So, this certainly gives us a tool to make sure that our streets don't get abused.
Currently, city code, then, is silent on weight limits for trucks?
There's nothing in there that specifically allows us to enforce weight limitations that has a fine assess to it.
Help me understand a little bit more. In the first paragraph, really, load established by North Dakota state law, yet, aren't we going to designate truck routes and possibly very low limits, weight limits, on certain streets? How does that, how do we reconcile that with this statement?
The penalty scheme that's imposed is the same as state law, so we would be enforcing the same regulations that NDOT enforces on state highways. Those would be the same regulations that would be enforced for city streets.
Okay, so this is not in conflict with us designating what weights go on what streets?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Captain, right now, it, or in the future here, will they end up taking the truck out to the Baylor Building and weighing it on that scale? Or are we going to have to purchase those portable scales that you put underneath the tires?
Yeah, right now, our plan is not to purchase portable scales. We are going to direct them out to the Baylor Building and use their certified scale. And they have an adequate space after they're weighed. We can move it to the back of the Baylor Building and, and deal with those issues after that.
Thank you.
Have we looked at the cost of the signage to implement this, to designate? Has there been anything done with that?
I have not looked at the cost. Maybe Mr. Soren has looked into the signing issue.
No, I have not looked at the cost. Currently, according to this ordinance, we'd have to establish the truck routes, and until we determine those, we wouldn't know the number of signs that we needed. We're, it's not required by this ordinance that we do sign, even though it is suggested.
Okay.
Any other questions here or comments? We'll ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on this proposed ordinance. And so, you can step to the podium, state your name, we'd hear your comments. Mr. Coling, do you have an ordinance number for it?
This would be Ordinance 1401.
And so, then, it's on here for the consideration of first reading. Is there a motion regarding first reading?
So, move to approve first reading, Ordinance 1401?
No, second.
We have the motion, the second. Any, any discussion?
Just, I have had a handful of comments from citizens concerned about trucks and where they are, and whether or not they should be there. I've even had a suggestion that we should eliminate heavy truck traffic on state avenue. I think that might have some merit, even as we begin to look at it. But this is appropriate that we do this.
I agree. I mean, I've, I've had a number of comments, questions from citizens, too, about truck traffic on city streets, especially those big trucks.
Our side streets are starting to get pretty well fractured and everything else, but with the new construction that we're looking at, and some of these new subdivisions, we have to make sure we direct them, you know, away from those more vulnerable areas, that they're used in their main arteries.
A closely related issue is the water salesman and the trucks that are coming here for water. I know we have some thought about moving that location, so I think that has to be in step with this action as well.
Now, I agree. I think if, if the city is going to sell water or authorize others to sell water, we have to get it outside of the main, main portion of the city. Okay, we have the motion, the second. Anything else? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item F, liquor license ordinance change, and here we do finally have this one for the first reading. And Mr. Coling, is there anything you'd like to say about this one?
Just briefly, Mr. President Commissioners, this ordinance has, you know, has been under discussion for quite some time. There are four basic changes that are made in, in the ordinance before you. Provides for the potential addition of an on-off sale license by bid process if, at some point, you decide to issue another on-off sale license. It does allow for the imposition of issuance fees and transfer fees for new liquor licenses. Provides that all of the liquor license fees will be set by resolution rather than by ordinance, as is currently the case. And then, it does provide as well for a caterer's license, an additional class of licenses under our scheme. There was some discussion last time about how we could best create a caterer's license, and there are some new statutory language that are drafted in that. I believe that is Item K on your, on the schedule, on the ordinance. And attempts to define a caterer, somebody who is selling alcoholic beverages, whether onsite or offsite, no more than 30 times in any calendar year. That would be the limitation upon caterers, and the way that we would attempt to distinguish between legitimate catering business and someone that would be selling alcohol as a normal part of their business, an everyday sales sort of thing. Whether 30 is the right number, that's something that, that would be at your discretion, but it is something that, that would allow them to serve alcohol an approximate number of times that I believe Lady Jase does in any given year, and still not allow regular alcohol sales throughout the year. I'd welcome your comments.
So, there is, like, no state requirement that there be 30 days? You could've written 60 days in there, or 15 days?
Correct.
Whatever, okay. All right. You've heard Mr. Coling's introduction. Do you have any comments or questions for him?
Couple of questions concerning the caterer, and I, and I'm fine with the intent of what we're trying to do. First question is, we have some restaurants and lodges, I think, that hold other liquor licenses. Will they need to purchase a caterer's liquor license as well?
I believe we have other restaurants and bars that may host off-sale sales of alcohol. That's, I believe, what the question is. They would be able to obtain an event permit, and be able to do that on a one-time basis.
Okay, so this doesn't require something more than that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. The event permit is still available. Any liquor license holder can still acquire one. This caterer's license basically streamlines that process. They don't have to come in every time and pay a fee for, for an event permit.
Okay, now going to the other end of the spectrum. If somebody hires me, God forbid, to cater some wedding reception, can I come in and get a caterer's license?
If, if you met the requirement for a caterer, yes, you could. You could come in and, and pay the fee for a liquor license and, and set yourself up as a caterer.
My point is, could we be getting a rush on caterer's licenses here?
That's.
The only qualification, the only definition I see here is that is related to the alcohol side of it.
Mm-hmm.
But there's still a substantive cost to it, too. It would be cost prohibitive to get a caterer's license for one event.
Correct. There's still a fee that, that is charged, which is substantially in excess of the, the event fee. So, just as somebody could set themselves up as a caterer and cater events, so somebody could set themselves up as a restaurant that serves alcohol and get that license, there's no limit on that license either.
Okay, I guess as long as you guys are comfortable with it, I, it just came to mind.
Mr. Coling, in the section where you, where lodge or club licenses are addressed, there are no changes, you know, to the current language. The question I had, you know, the, the old language is there, it says, "As of May 2, 1975." And it goes on to, you know, say, "What was there?" I'm, I'm wondering, should we update that as to what's there now? I mean, I'm not necessarily asking if we should take out existing language, but I'm just wondering if we, should we update it? Because I know there have been changes.
Sure, we certainly can. I think there are only two lodge licenses out there, maybe three, but we can certainly update that language if you so desire.
I was, I was thinking there might be three, yeah.
Do we need a statement of a penalty for any of this ordinance?
Commissioner Landblum, the penalty for any liquor license violation is in a different section of code that's already incorporated into, into our existing city code, so it would be those same penalties that would apply if any of these licenses were, were violated as well.
Is this Ordinance 1402 now?
Yes, that's correct, 1402.
1402, okay. Well, at this time, we'd invite anyone from the public that would wish to comment on this proposed ordinance. You may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, and hear your comments.
President Johnson, Commissioners, I'm Bernie Marsh, owner of the Esquire Club downtown here. I've got just a couple of things on here that I would like to touch with you. On the second page, in the second paragraph, where it goes on the population, you know, for when this license comes up, 3,000, but in the future, I don't know if it's an idea that we could probably raise that number, because as we're annexing people into our city, these are already customers of ours, and so, I just think that maybe that might be something to consider, would be to raise that number. Because we're not really gaining anything as far as the people that are coming into our, into our establishments.
Do you have a number in mind?
Either 4,000 or 5,000, I guess. Those were the numbers that were in my head. The second one is on the special provision on the Queen City or Evil Olive. You know, it'd be nice if we'd clean that up. I know that there's some bad feelings there, but I think they've probably gotten the message on what you're trying to tell them, and I guess there's other ways that you can deal with, with them if, if they make another violation. The next one that I have here is, going to the catering thing. Oh, no, the restaurant one I have here. You know, we visited several times in the past about restaurants that run as bars, you know, and, and no limit on restaurant licenses, and how maybe we can control that. And right now, the equation is 50, you know, not more than 50 percent, you know. Would it be possible to raise that to either 60, 40 on, on the food sales, or 70, 30? That would probably be a suggestion that I would have to help control the restaurants that come as restaurants and run as bars. And getting to the catering thing, I think that maybe that was run through rather quickly, and now, now there's questions that have come up. You know, we just raised our license fees, and, you know, two years down the road, if we can't feel that our licenses worth that much, can we come and get it at, you know, a new clarification for a new license? And that's not even a big thing to me. The big thing that bothers me with that is the administrative fee for the special event permits. I think it's important that that dollar figure stays with that piece of paper. And so, if it's 25 bucks or 35 bucks, she adds that, or whoever the caterer is, adds that to the fee of catering that event. But at least it makes sure that that piece of paper goes to whichever department heads it has to go to. And it just doesn't become a piece of paper that lays on somebody's desk and, and it's forgotten about. I guess that's all I've got. If any, any questions?
Any, any questions?
I'm not sure I quite got the last point about the caterer.
Well, right now, if we want to get a special events permit, we have to fill out a piece of paper, and it costs 25 bucks, I think, for three days. I think it's probably going up to 35, I'm not sure. But I mean, that's still a pretty minimal dollar figure to pay for that permit. But to not have a fee on it, doesn't really make that, it sort of takes the value off of having that permit. And there's still the responsibility to make sure that that, because that permit is signed by different department heads, from the police department to the fire department and the ambulance people. I think those are the different people that have to have signatures on that special events permit. And I think that minimal fee, even if it's $35, and the caterer has to add that to the cost of catering the, the event, I mean, that's pretty minimal, and I think it's important to have that fee still attached to that permit.
So, have, have we proposed to take that off at this point?
Mm-hmm.
We have.
Mr. President? The ordinance that's currently drafted provides that the caterer would pay an annual fee, just like any other license. When they cater and sell alcohol, they would have to apply for a special event permit, outline the area in which alcohol will be sold, and comply with all those other requirements, but they wouldn't be required to pay the fee, which is going to be $35 as of next year. If you want to impose the fee, I have no issue with that.
Yeah, I think we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, or a month ago. We did talk about it before. But it probably does make sense, if we're going to require the permit, why we wouldn't treat them the same.
All of us other liquor holders have to pay it, which, I mean, like I said, it's still minor, but I think it's important that that fee. Otherwise, eventually, it's like, do we even have to fill out this piece of paper, you know?
So, you get a, if you want to hold a beer gardens or something like that, you'd have to pay the fee?
I pay, we, we do our beer garden, street dance over the 4th of July. I have to get a special events permit, and, and I have to pay the fee, and, which, like I said, it's, it's a nominal fee, but it makes sure that that piece of paper goes to where it has to go.
Okay.
Anything other that I can answer?
No. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to comment on this proposed ordinance? Okay, no one else from the public wishes to comment. I guess as, as a commission, you can either, you know, we can, we can tell Mr. Coling, this is close enough for first reading, and, and act on first reading, or if there are other changes you'd like to make and see before you act on first reading, you can, you can take that direction also. And if you'd like to comment on any of the suggestions or requests by Mr. Marsh, you can do that, too. Mr. Altman?
I would like to discuss the second point that he made. I would like to discuss the second point that he made, and that is the on/off sale licenses special provision. And I do really believe that if we're going to clean this ordinance up once and for all, that we should do that, leaving in language about the Queen City and a location-specific license only is going to come back to haunt us at a later date, whether they sell their business, that business changes ownership, et cetera. And it was an oversight long ago that should have been taken care of. When they got the ability to be annexed into the community and the benefits that go with that, they should have gotten the benefits of having a full license. And I would have to see a good reason why now wouldn't be the time to change that. I guess I'd like to hear those arguments of why we wouldn't clean that up at this point and move on with it.
Thank you, Mr. Olman. Anybody else here to comment?
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
I don't really want to make any changes now. I mean, I can accept the first reading here, but to Mr. Olman, I don't want to make any changes myself to the number of licenses until we see the census and take everything under consideration, with the true census and so on. That apparently is what is triggering a lot of discussion. I just want to wait till I see the census and address the whole thing.
How does changing the transferability of their license change the number of licenses that we issue, or the population threshold that we hit? How does that impact that?
Again, I think we've got the issue out there of another license where a person may want to start another business in town with the liquor license. And we're getting some opposition from the liquor establishment not to give that license. Then we want to change this to allow her possibly, that's what they could do shortly, and rebuild somewhere else. You know, I think there's, we're just on the same side there with the liquor establishment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
I've probably given this part of the ordinance more thought than any of it. I'm fine with the rest of it, and Mr. Marsh has made some comments. Some of those are half dozen, six of the other. But this issue of the Queen City Club, I too think we should clean it up. I don't condone what happened out there, but we have ordinance to cover that, we have penalty, we have processes to watch it. You know, it could have been anybody else. I think that when we started talking about this liquor ordinance four, five, six months ago, whenever it was, I think there was some informal consensus on this board that we would clean that up, if I recall, if I'm remembering right. Correct me if I'm wrong. I'm not sure that what has transpired should change that. I think it makes sense to clean it up. I think probably what happened in 1993 was a political concession. That was 20 years ago. I think it's time to fix it. Again, I don't condone what's happened out there, and I think we should enforce our ordinances, our other ordinances, the other portions of the ordinance rigidly and aggressively. I would hope the owners of the Queen City Club or the Evil Olive would rise to the occasion of having, you know, an honorable business in the community.
Well, and we had the general consensus, not only amongst us, but amongst the business owners that came to all of the meetings that we had here. The resounding theme at those meetings were that the Queen City should be allowed to have a regular license. And again, if it's based on the decision of their recent infraction, and that maybe they didn't have an appropriate level of remorsefulness, it's not a good basis not to strike it from, from the language and clean it up. And I think you're right, that we have the means in place to make sure that they stay in compliance, and again, it was the general consensus of not only the commission, but it was the general consensus and message that we got from the public hearings, that this was the wish of the people, too.
Thank you, Mr. Olman. Just again, for matter of clarification, it says on March 1, 1995, total of 15 on/off sales. The one at the Queen City Club is really 16 then, isn't it?
Correct.
So we have 16. When we had the present license holders testify, I think there was some support for the Queen City Club license becoming the license that would be authorized for the 18, at the 18,000 population level. Do you see that as just, as the city having 16, and then if we are 18,000, we go to 17? Or do you see the Queen City Club as being the license that's authorized at 18,000?
I guess I don't have strong feelings either way. Certainly, I think we're better suited if, when we get the census figures and we know what the numbers are, that we have this ordinance cleaned up and ready to go, so that we can make a decision moving forward. I think if we don't clean it up now, and we fast forward to when we do get the census number, it's still going to be a lingering question of, is the Queen City the new license, or was it part of the original 16, and do we have the capacity to issue a 17? I think it's going to come back to haunt us either way, if we don't clean it up.
I guess I don't see it as having anything to do with the 18,000. We have 16 licenses in town.
No matter how you look at it.
No matter how you cut it, we have 16 licenses right now. So, you know, I have feelings about whether or not an additional one should be granted, but I don't think that has anything to do with the Queen City Club location.
For clarification, by cleaning it up now, it just means that the license could be transferred to another physical site, is that it?
Right. Right now, their license is tailored to that specific site, so, you know, the downside of that, I would see, is that they are in an older building as well. And at what point does the building run out of its shelf life, and then there goes your license as well, even though you've invested in it, when you're tied to a specific location?
I have another question in terms of clarification. I thought we had heard from previous testimony that when the Queen City area was annexed into the city, that happened well before 1993. So it's been there a long time. That, did I remember that correctly?
1979.
79, okay. And I guess where I was kind of going with my line of questioning and comments is if, if we do, as Mr. Olman and Mr. Jackson have advocated, then I think, you know, we almost should write this as a, you know, on October 18, 2010, there now exists a total of 16, and so it's very clear.
Very clear.
That's, that's kind of where I was going, you know, I'd requested that Mr. Olman, two weeks ago, be very eloquent at this meeting, which he has, and so, you know, I'm, I'm not going to oppose, say, this ordinance just because we changed the language of the Queen City Club, even though I have some reservations about doing that. But I think if we do change that, I guess, Mr. Coling, what I'm wondering is if, can we just eliminate the whole Section B and incorporate it, rewrite it into Section A? Does that make any sense at all?
Yes, Mr. President, that, I think that would be the process. We just eliminate Section B and redate beginning in Section A.
And just say, as of the current date, this is what we have, and...
I imagine we would probably state it as of January 1, that's when all the liquor licenses are renewed.
Okay, yeah, whatever. I guess that's, what do you think about that, then?
That would make me happy. That would clean it up. That would clean it up.
I can have at least one happy city commissioner, and then I'm happy. I don't know that that change is so major that, you know, we would ask Mr. Coling to redraft this and then consider first reading. I think we could act on first reading with the understanding that, you know, that change be made. You know, I guess Mr. Marsh raised some other issues. The, it's, the original ordinance said 3,000 increase in, in population beyond the 18,000. He suggested 4,000 or 5,000. Do you have any feelings, one way or the other, there? Any opinions?
Based on the growth patterns that we've experienced over the last 20 or 30 years, I think the 30, no, 3,000 is still pretty adequate as a measuring stick.
I'm fine with the 3,000.
I'm fine with the 3,000 as well.
Okay, he also raised the issue of, you know, the, when we define a restaurant, it's currently, it has to be at least 50 percent food sales, and I think, under Mr. Coling's new language here, it also kind of strengthens the ordinance. It's going to require that they certify that their food sales are at least 50 percent. It's going to require that a certified public accountant also certify that. So, I mean, they just can't just say it so without having an accountant say it so. So I think that's added some, some strength here. Personally, I kind of hesitate to change it from 50 percent, since for so many years, they've been operating under that understanding. And, you know, you'd almost have to grandfather the ones in that are here, and then say, anybody after a certain date has to have a higher percentage, and, I don't know, I think maybe that's got some issues with it, too.
I think you're right, and I think that adding the teeth to it, like we did with the accounting, I think that really clears it up, too, to make sure that it's actually happening.
Mr. Prowse, did you want to comment?
I'm Larry Prowse, property broker, Sharon Dickinson. I did talk to the State Department on this, as far as accountability for, like you mentioned, the 50 percent versus, 50 percent food versus 50 percent liquor, and they told me that the cities are not required to keep track of this, however, the state does at random. They do it on a basis such as they have a, the state sends out each year a form, and you fill it out and tell us your amount of percentages and what you did. And then at random, what they do, they go to the sales tax department, and they get their sales tax returns, and then they do it on the reverse way of doing business, percentage of food versus your, the amount of sales versus your expenses, liabilities, what you purchase from these different clientele. Anyway, they say that's how they do it, because then they send a letter back to the city stating that something is wrong here. If that makes sense to you, that's what they've been doing.
I think what this also would require them to do is their own internal financial statements, really, it's going to require that a certified public accountant looks at those statements and is comfortable in signing this city form that says, you know, in their opinion, 50 percent or more of the sales are food sales. And if a certified public accountant is going to do that, they're probably either going to want to see audited statements, or at the very least, reviewed statements, and maybe make a few auditing tests themselves before they're comfortable doing that. So this, this is a fairly stringent requirement, that I think if the city has any concern at all that someone isn't at that 50 percent level, it puts a fairly heavy burden on the business to prove that they are. And I, I think the testimony that we heard at prior public hearings from the existing industry, that they have concerns about, you know, posing as a restaurant when you're really a bar, I think is a valid concern.
Right, you mentioned it earlier.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else here?
Mr. President. I'm okay with the ordinance. The only issue I had was the change from the 15 to 16 to include Evil Olive. I don't have any problem with that, if, as long as it doesn't affect the 18,000 number that we're looking now and what's coming up in the census for an additional license. As long as we're all clear that we always had 16.
We always had 16.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, Mr. Coling, do you think you have a pretty good understanding of what we would like you to do?
I think so. The only question I would have is as to the caterer's license, whether you wish to impose the $35 event fee or have that waived for a caterer. I don't know if there was a consensus on what you would like to see for the next reading on that.
It's seemingly inconsequential, but it would make us consistent. So I would say yes.
Anybody disagree with Mr. Jackson? Okay, you know, again, we all realize that as we go through the process here, first reading and some additional public hearings, before we get to second reading, you know, things still can, can be changed. But I, I feel comfortable in acting on first reading here. Then we'll definitely schedule some, at least one public hearing and maybe two. You know, I'm hearing Mr. Steiner say that he doesn't really mind if the action on second reading doesn't take place till we actually maybe know some census numbers.
I'm okay.
The others may feel differently, but...
Is that what, is that what we're saying? We're not going to do second reading?
No, that's what I thought, that's what I thought you said.
We're going to have without the census numbers.
Oh, you are, okay. I'm sorry.
As long as we all understand that 16 is the number we're talking about here.
We have 16 licenses.
Right.
Because if it doesn't come in at certain numbers, I don't want people to say, well, now we got to, we're including one more and, you know. I just want to be clear on that, because it seems to be...
But if, if, if we are at 18,000 people, we understand, 18,000 or more, we understand that this would then allow us to go to 17.
Correct. We're going to add two if we're at 50.
Right.
Right.
So with the first reading, if I may ask, would we be eliminating the Evil Olive clause in there? That's an understanding? Do we have to take formal... Do we have to take formal action on that particular segment to do that? Or it can be just with the reading itself?
Mr. Coling say he could just clean it up in this reading, right?
Yes. Mr. President Commissioners, you can approve first reading on this, and then state law allows us to make changes in the ordinance between first reading and second reading. So, we can make those changes at that time and present a final copy to you for second reading and final passage.
But if somebody screws up, if we're able to reinsert it, then if we have to?
Yes. You can disapprove second reading. You can amend it at second reading. First reading just puts it on your agenda and makes the public aware that this is something that is proceeding forward to final passage.
So, would be 1402?
Yes, 1402.
Well, I'd move for the passage of the first reading of ordinance 1402 and direct the city attorney to make the amendments we've discussed tonight.
I would second it.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And then we'll put this on the agenda for a public hearing for the next meeting. And that will not be on the agenda, though, for second reading.
Right.
For just a public hearing. Now, we're moving right along. Ordinance for avoiding traffic device. This is consideration of second reading and final passage. It's ordinance number 1400. Captain Dossinger did present this, I think, two meetings ago as a report. And then last meeting, we did act on first reading. Just ask if there's anyone from the public that wants to comment on this ordinance. Come to the podium. No one from the public. Pretty straightforward ordinance. Anything else here from city commissioners or the police department?
I'll move for the second reading and final passage of ordinance 1400.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us to item H, water utility accounts combination. And this would be consideration of first reading of this ordinance. And, Mr. Coling, can you introduce this?
Yes, sir. The ordinance before you combines the city's wastewater, excuse me, combines the city's water fund and wastewater fund into a single fund for water utilities. Previously, the city has operated separate funds for those two departments. And you have approved in your budget that a single fund, those funds would be combined into a single fund. This ordinance just accomplishes that in code language. And it's pretty straightforward. I'd take any questions you might have.
What's your advantage?
It was suggested to me by Finance Director Johnson, and I'll let her comment on that.
While she's coming up to the podium, we would still keep a separate stormwater fund.
Correct.
That's correct. Mrs. Johnson?
We felt this change would make it easier to budget. The two of them are so closely related that most expenses really are hard to define when they're water and when they're wastewater. A lot of times invoices are just split between the two. So, this would allow us to combine those balances and combine the budgeting for both of them.
Yeah. We don't really have separate wastewater employees and separate water employees either, do we? They can work both sides.
Right.
So, basically, if all the water comes in, all the same amount of water leaves, and it's just combined in one notation, then?
Right.
Also, I have a question, maybe for Mr. Shoren and anything else. Are there residents around here that have different sized meters? Are there, do some of the residents have different sized meters, or are they all uniformed throughout the city?
Well, I do believe we do have different sized meters. I don't know that I know the exact answer, but, you know, apartment complexes might have a larger meter than a single-family residential. I do believe we have a few single families that had requested larger service sizes than a standard. So, I do believe we have a few of those in the city.
I've had some comments, you know, that there are a few single families have had, you know, larger meters than what they really wanted, or can they opt out for a smaller sized? Is there an advantage to it?
I'm not sure of this situation, I guess. They certainly can come talk to us regarding it. I do know we had one situation where they requested a larger meter and don't think they should have to pay the fee for the larger meter.
That might be the case, then.
Okay. Mr. Coling, what's the ordinance number on this one?
It's going to be 1403.
Okay. Well, I'll ask if there's anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this proposed ordinance. If so, just step to the podium and state your name. We'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public that wishes to comment. Any other comments by city staff or city commission members? Would there be a motion regarding the first reading here?
Mr. President, move to approve ordinance number 1403.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second to approve first reading. Any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item is a proclamation regarding pancreatic cancer awareness month. And I'll read that proclamation. During the month of November, pancreatic cancer awareness month in the city of Dickinson. Whereas in 2010, an estimated 43,140 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States and 36,800 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and is the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is usually too late for an optimistic prognosis. And 75% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas incidence of pancreatic cancer is approximately 50% higher in African-Americans than in other ethnic groups. And whereas approximately 90 deaths will occur in North Dakota in 2010. Whereas there is no cure for pancreatic cancer, and there have been no significant improvements in survival rates in the last 40 years. Whereas the federal government invests significantly less money in pancreatic cancer research than it does in any of the other leading cancer killers. And pancreatic cancer research constitutes only 2% of the National Cancer Institute's federal research funding, a figure far too low given the severity of the disease, its mortality rate, and how little is known about how to arrest it. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the first and only national patient advocacy organization that serves the pancreatic cancer community in Dickinson and nationwide by focusing its efforts on public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. Whereas Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in Dickinson support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer as well as to those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Dickinson are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Therefore, be resolved that the president of the city commission designate the month of November 2010 pancreatic cancer awareness month in Dickinson, North Dakota. And I am very pleased to make that designation, that November be pancreatic cancer awareness month. And so, I will sign the proclamation and pass it down to Mr. Coling for him to attest. We have one other proclamation, and this is regarding the Extra Mile Foundation. And the proclamation reads, whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community that encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota is a community that chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America Foundation to create 100 extra mile cities and states in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2010. Now, therefore, I, President of the city of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2010 to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in our community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those around who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. And I'm very pleased, again, to sign this proclamation. And I know Dickinson truly does have many citizens who volunteer their time quite generously, and it really helps to make our community work. Pass that on to Mr. Coling. We have item K, which is a flood damage prevention ordinance. And, Mr. Coling, can you introduce that item?
Mr. President, this is a ordinance that was requested or suggested by the Federal Emergency Management Association. Mr. Shoren has been more involved with development of this ordinance than I have, and I would ask him to make comment on that.
President Johnson, city commissioners, this ordinance is one that was presented to us by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. It's similar to one that we have on the record right now regarding our flood zone areas throughout town and dealing with the damage and the prevention thereof from flooding. The purpose of the updated ordinance comes from the recent development of the new flood plain maps that have been presented. And this, the adoption of this ordinance takes into consideration the adoption of those new maps that are being submitted. If we elect not to pass an ordinance to continue this program, we'll no longer be part of the flood plain management area as far as FEMA is concerned throughout town. And with that, we've worked through this, looked at our previous ordinance, got all the updates that we needed to do in here to adopt the new maps, and are recommending approval of the first reading of this ordinance tonight.
Okay. And it would be ordinance 1404?
Correct.
You're saying that the map has been completed now?
Yes, they have submitted us with the revised maps and had proper comment period on those, and they have been finalized and in a digital format.
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Can we post those new flood maps on our city site? And the reason I say this here, when you're familiar with the current flood map, with the drainage just going through town, that map hasn't been changed in 30 years. And so, there were homeowners out there that required by banks to purchase flood insurance in that zone. And this, with the change of this here, it might affect them to where they may not need to purchase the flood insurance, which can be expensive. But I think it'd be an educational system for those people to look at their property and see if they are either in or not in right now.
We can certainly research to see if that's something we can, can't get any useful format on our...
I think everyone along that dip is going to want to look at it. Even though we had improvements along there, they didn't change their map for that there.
I think it's really a good point, Mr. Steiner. And I know in my former career, I was very involved in a lot of this. And it really is a burden on some homeowners as they're trying to finance and all. I'd suggest that we even, once that map is official and published, maybe it is now, that we even put an ad in the paper stating very clearly that there is a new flood map in Dickinson. It affects a lot of people. It's really important. As to the ordinance, it looks like a really good tool to me. I've only been through it once. I think we should adopt it, but I think that as we go through this process of adopting it, we should be proactive in providing a copy of the ordinance to the Home Builders Association, the Realtors, whoever else we might think is affected or can get the word out. Because there are some requirements in here that will be a little bit different. I did notice one specific thing on page 13, item four. It talks about base flood elevation data for subdivisions, and it gives certain sizes, number of lots. I believe state law requires that on all subdivision plots. I assume state law would supersede just a detail point. But I think all in all, it's very good. But while we're going through the process, let's get this out to some interested parties.
Sure.
Any other comments? Is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment on this proposed ordinance? Okay. Is there a motion regarding first reading?
So, move to first reading?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any other discussion?
It'd be 1404?
1404, yes. Hearing now, discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Landblum?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, that motion carries. We'll go to public safety and hear from the fire department.
President Johnson, commissioners, in addition to our monthly report, I've got some information for you that we've been successful in receiving another $17,500 in a grant from the North Dakota Department of Emergency Services to apply towards our radio project. The date, we've also received a $500 donation from Marathon Oil to apply towards this project. It's my understanding the Dickinson Rural Fire Department received a similar donation from Marathon Oil. We want to recognize them for that donation. That brings our total dollars available to work with to approximately $67,000, leaving approximately $26,000 of unbudgeted expense to the city of Dickinson. It's interesting to note that when we first brought our radio situation, our radio problem before you, and asked for consideration of moving forward with changing, at that time, our projected look at this thing was that the city of Dickinson's cost would be over $60,000 out of pocket and unbudgeted. And thanks to our grants and donations, we've brought that down to approximately $26,000. That's all I've got for you.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments or questions for the Chief? All right. Police Department.
Good evening, Mr. President. Commissioners, our September traffic services report indicated there were 50 accidents reported in September, nine of which were injury accidents, and 38 of those involved property damage of $1,000 or more. There were also 26 school zone contacts made in the month of September. You will also find a report from the South Dakota Narcotics Task Force, which officially now is called the Southwest Narcotics Task Force. That task force was initiated 11 cases, three of which involved prescription drugs, five cases involved methamphetamine, and three cases involved marijuana. This new Narcotics Task Force, Southwest, involves all Southwest counties and different cities. I think it'll better serve Dickinson and the surrounding area than the South Dakota Narcotics Task Force. So, I'm looking forward to working with these agents. Most of them are the same agents that were previously, but I think we're going to be more centralized now. With that, I'll be glad to take any comments or questions.
Anything for the Chief? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Engineering, Mr. Shorn, we'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, President Johnson. The first item I have, which has been in front of you at the last meeting, is a rezoning request for the Lyon subdivision. Once again, the Lyon subdivision is northeast of town, was part of the annexation discussion earlier today. It's a roughly 22-acre tract that's currently zoned a... It's a roughly 22-acre tract that's currently zoned agricultural, and the request is to get that rezoned to R1, single family. And the subdivision consists of 18 lots in that northeast area, and we're recommending approval.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Soren. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this proposed ordinance? No one from the public. Any comments by City Commissioners or City Staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lambloom?
I have some concern about the ingress and egress of, from the 34th Street, as to whether those streets are gonna be improved. If we're gonna require hard surfacing or improvements within the Lyons, what about the access roads going into that subdivision? Is there a requirement, or is there anything planned for hard surfacing, or?
At this point, we don't have anything planned for hard surfacing. We are working with the county on the development of those streets to get into that property from the north. It still is part of the county and part of their road system, so we're working close with them on making the improvements that the developer needs to get into his property.
Okay, and then the city's gonna be, since being annexed and everything, the city's gonna be responsible for the maintenance of those roads within that subdivision. But we have to cross through County Road to get there?
Possibly, for a short time, that's true, yes.
I just wanted to raise it as a concern that, you know, we're developing something that does not have, you know, a real strong access road into it, and it just should be noted, and hopefully that the county and the city will be able to come together shortly and, you know, remedy to that situation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lambloom. Any other questions or comments?
Ready for motion?
I'm ready.
I'll move for the approval of second reading, final passage, ordinance 1398.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Additional discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
The next item we have is another rezoning petition. This one is the Diamond Acres subdivision, which is located south of 21st, west of 10th Avenue East and east of the Highway Department, kind of in that area. Several lots in this subdivision currently. The zoning in that area is a mix of R2 on the west side and R1 for the remainder of the property. The request that is in front of you does include a lot of different zoning districts from R1, R2, R3, and GC. There was a map at the previous meeting that designated those locations, but in general, typically GC is next to the Highway Department, then it goes into an R3, R2, into an R1, with another GC area on the northeast corner, near the corner of 10th Avenue East and 21st Street. Planning and zoning through the development of this subdivision, has reviewed all of this and is recommending approval of the zoning as submitted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Soren. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment? No one from the public. Comments or questions by City Staff or City Commissioners? Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'd make the motion for approval of second reading, ordinance 1399.
I'll second.
For the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
In under reports, the only thing I would point out is under our code enforcement, just to note, the new building permits, we're more than double what we had last year at this time, at 138 compared to 65. Our additions and alterations are down just a little bit, but the new building has been keeping us busy. Currently, we've got three hotels that we're working with, and restaurant, and several other projects. This is probably the latest we've seen some of the commercial projects take off that we've ever seen. You know, we're trying to, try and get things wrapped up at this point, and here we got people trying to start, so. But be happy to try and answer any questions that you may have with regards to any of the report items.
Any questions for the City Engineer or comments? Thank you, Mr. Soren. We'll go to Public Works, that's Tab 7.
There's an item on the Board of Adjustment Meetings that they wanted to raise the tower from 65 to 33 feet. I think it's probably a misprint, I should have, on Page 2. Have your minutes?
It's to 333, I believe.
On Number 2 up there, I think that, probably have to correct your minutes.
It was 333 feet, I believe, yep. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Trump.
That's all right, okay. We're now on Tab 7, Item A, which is a lift station inspection agreement. Mr. Soren, are you introducing this item?
I hadn't planned on it.
Okay. Mr. Coleen, had you planned on it?
No, I had not. I'd be happy to do so, though.
I'll do it.
Well, Mr. Jackson says he'll do it.
I can't introduce the topic, but I, devoid of an introduction. You know, I'm really questioning this. I would like to know what we did for an RFP or bid documents or whatever. We've got two quotes here that are miles apart. And I can see some inconsistencies in what's being provided. I, I'm thinking I'd like to wait on this a couple of weeks until we can get some answers. I, either we've got a low bidder here who's not gonna give us what we think we're getting, or we didn't have the ability to compare apples to apples on this.
I'd agree with you, Mr. Jackson. When there's a difference of $20,000 between the bids, something's remiss, isn't it?
Mr. Soren, do you know anything at all about this?
I don't at this point.
Yeah, we have no City Department heads here to speak to it, so.
I expect it can wait a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I agree. We'll just, we'll carry this over to the next meeting. Okay. We're down to Tab 8, City Administrator's Report. He's out of town. Mr. Coleen, did he give you any instructions on how to present these items, or am I on my own?
Well, I think you're on your own.
All right. Okay, the first one then, just for matter of information, is he's written a letter to the North Dakota Department of Transportation, and he's requesting dollars that, federal dollars that are administered by the Department of Transportation to assist the city in creating a comprehensive plan, and he's requested up to $250,000. And if you recall from our recent budget discussions, that we did include monies in our 2011 budget that would be our kind of match for this, if we were to get these monies. And I think he told us, if I remember correctly too, that he had received some encouragement to request these dollars, so hopefully we'll be the recipient here of these funds or something close to that amount, and we can develop an updated comprehensive plan. So that's, any comments or questions there?
Just one question, and I don't know if Mr. Soren can help with this. Is this actually for a comprehensive plan, or is it for a transportation study that will have land use elements?
Yes, it is. Williston has recently done a study similar to what we had talked about. As he mentions, the scope isn't outlined in here for sure, but it would include transportation, land use, growth areas. It can include all of that type of information in it. A recent study that was done was roughly in that $300,000, $325,000 range. So with the $250,000 here, and I believe we had $75,000, I'm not sure, but I think that's the number that was for our planning, we thought we'd be in that ballpark with our match of that study to be able to give us both the land use and a transportation document that could serve as, and serve as a comprehensive plan as well.
So you're saying it is actually a comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the next item that he has is a memorandum of understanding between St. Joseph's Hospital and the City of Dickinson, and this is for participating in what's called a 340B drug program. And, Mr. Coleen, I'm, my understanding of this would be that this is something that's been more or less requested by St. Joseph's Hospital.
That's correct.
Okay. And I think if I read it correctly, it really allows St. Joseph to perhaps better serve the underinsured population.
I believe that's a fair reading of it, yes, Mr. President.
So I would guess that at a later date, this memorandum of understanding would come before the Commission for approval.
I think that was Mr. Kessel's intent, too.
Yeah. So I don't have anything else to say about it.
We want action tonight?
Nope. It's just a report, and we can act on that when Mr. Kessel's back. Okay, the next item involves the historic Dickinson Elks Building. We have received, Mr. Kessel has received a formal letter of requests that the development agreement between the city and Mr. Brinkman's company be extended while they continue to work on the building. Mr. Coleen has informed us that as city attorney, he cannot represent us on matters involving the historic Elks Building as they have a relationship with Mr. Brinkman. So this is a report at this point. We would act on this request probably at the next meeting, but Mr. Brinkman is here, he's in town, and I think gives us an opportunity to listen to his report on the status of the building. I think he has some photographs that he would like to show us, so we'd welcome you to the podium. It also gives you a chance to question him about the project and how it's going. Mr. Brinkman?
President Johnson, City Commissioners, thank you for letting me be here tonight. As President Johnson said, I submitted a formal request to Mr. Kessel for extension of the development agreement between New Care Development and the City of Dickinson. Currently, the second, first, and basement floors are scheduled for substantial completion by the end of the year with occupancy in early spring of next year. And the third floor, due to selection of finishes by the selected owners, we're projecting substantial completion in April of 2011 with occupancy in late spring. As you can see when you drive by the building, there's been substantial improvements to the exterior building. Included in each one of your package should have been a picture of what the building looked like last October compared to what it looks like this October. It went from boarded up windows and broken glass to what you see there today. This is an exciting project. It's taken longer to complete than desired for all of us, for a number of different reasons. However, the work on the building has been steady, not at the pace I wanted, and I'm sure not at the pace that anybody else has wanted. But there has been substantial completion done on the building, and I'm committed to the completion of this building. And considering my request, I'd ask the Board to take a look, and I'll show you some slides. This building sat vacant for just about two decades, and I'll go through these quick because I know everybody's getting tired. This is a picture of the building before the fire. I'll go through these quickly. And show is, these photos taken show what the building looked like in its previous state. We've been working on this project, myself, the foundation, and the city, since 2003. The three of us teamed up together to take and obtain a Brownsville grant. That grant was used to clean up what you're seeing here. The bottom right picture, that's standing on the third floor looking out what is the roof. That's the second floor, what used to be the dining room. That carpet wasn't green carpet, that was the mold that was growing on the carpet. Top picture's the basement. Second picture, lower right, you can tell it's second floor, what used to be the bar up on the second floor. And this is some of the pictures now after the fire, October 15, 2007. This is on the third floor. You see the damages that were done, the whole roof was burned off of the building. It's what it looked like looking in on the third floor. Again, I'm going through this quick. If anybody wants to go back, we can definitely go back. New roof system going in. This picture is about two and a half months old. This is what the second floor looks like now. Second floor right now is insulated, roughed in, ready for drywall. This is the first floor. As you can see, the mechanical plumbing and electrical are roughed in this floor. This floor is ready for insulation and ready for drywall. It's another picture, second floor. This is the exterior of the building, how it looks today. The new windows are in, the outside brick has all been sandblasted and recult and repaired where needed. If you look at the pictures of your photo, you can see that the cornice, the metals, and sandstone have all been repaired and patched. So that's the current state of the building today. We're very, we're proud of this building. It's taken longer than we expected, and again, I give you my commitment to do everything in my power to complete this project, to make it a part of downtown Dickinson, proud part of it. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Brinkman. Are there questions or comments for him?
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Mr. Brinkman, what percentage do you think is completed right now?
It would, based on flooring, I go by the floors. Second floor would be 90 to 92 percent because it's drywall paint. The finishes for the second floor have a pretty, have a higher dollar level than normal, so that would take, maybe drive that down a little bit. First floor is again ready for installation and drywall, which would be typically in about the 88, 85 to 88 percent. The basement is storage area, the elevators, the roughing work is complete on the elevator, the cab has to be put in place and installed. So the basement is probably somewhere in that, to be generous, maybe 80 percent. The third floor, there are four condo units, and the separation walls have all been built, and the mezzanine levels have been built. The separation walls are insulated and one side drywalled. The ceiling is dry, insulated and ready for drywall for the fire membrane. There'll be another layer that goes below that. The third floor, based on the amount of time it took us to select finishes for second floor, I think the third floor is gonna take me a while to get the finishes selected for what will go in each one of those units because they are individualized. They are basically gonna be a custom unit, and the owners will have choices of what they take and put into those units. So I just, I see it taking longer, that's why we stretched that time to April.
So you can see some light at the end of the tunnel?
Yeah.
Versus the roof.
Yeah, it's not a train, so.
Mr. Brinkman, it was pretty obvious when you were working on the outside that we could see construction workers there. could see construction workers there, recently working in the interior of the building, or regarding the interior of the building. Have you had construction workers in the interior, say, in the past couple of weeks?
Yes, there's been construction workers on site continually. My superintendent, my finished carpenter, and one of the lead men live, don't live here in Tacoma, so they go home about every two weeks for a three-day weekend, but that's where they're at right now. Outside of that, there's been activity in the building every day. Our fire sprinklers have local, other jobs they come and go to, and yeah, so there's been construction workers there every day.
I have heard the rumors about town that you're not making progress on the building because you're having financial difficulties or financial challenges. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, I can. There are financial challenges. You in North Dakota are extremely fortunate with your economic conditions. We're not as fortunate as that in other parts of the country. And I have several partners that I've had to, basically partnerships that I've had to dissolve, it's taken a lot of my time and energy and financial strength to take care of that. And so in the last four months, I have not been able to put the time to the Elks Building that I want to, but we have crossed that bridge and believe that we could continue to move forward.
You have adequate financing to continue to have workers on site then, and pay suppliers and so forth?
Yes. We have a substantial amount of our financing is already in place. There are some outside, outstanding items that need to, that are also dependent on the project. There's some grant dollars, there are some potential insurance dollars, there are still some outside dollars from the city that take and need to be incorporated into the project. And we have also, again, secured the majority of the financing for the project outside of that.
Any other questions or comments by commissioners?
What's your pre-sold occupancy right now, or at least contracts that you have out there?
Right now, we have LOIs for everything in the building except for 780 square feet. And that is on the lower floor on the west wing, and we have potential interest in that
Well, you've heard the report. We're going to put Mr. Brinkman's request for an extension on the agenda for the next meeting. Probably don't expect you to travel back here from Tacoma for that meeting, so if you do have comments or questions for Mr. Brinkman, now's a good time. Yeah, I think we would all agree that, especially there on the exterior, you've made some very nice progress, and we can see now where the building's going to be, I think, a real plus to that whole area. It's going to make a nice contribution, and I know the economy is difficult out there in the, especially when it relates to the construction markets. That's where my business competes, and it's a very difficult market out there, and I'm sure it's a challenge for you. I know it's a challenge for us.
It is a very large challenge. We're, it's been more of a challenge for the lending institutions than anybody out there. We're hoping that this, our latest one, that the bank stays in business, allowing us to, for us to use up the checks we purchased from them, so...
Is there a time duration for your grant?
That, I don't know. We've got, they responded back to us, and we have to resubmit that grant back to them, and I don't know the answer, what the timeframe is on that. We did a substantial upgrade to the insulation and the windows and HVAC system to the building, and we're, we applied for a grant, or an energy assistance grant, for that portion of the upgrade. And so we got comments back, and we have to resubmit those comments back for review.
And your Brownfields grant still in place?
The Brownsville grant is completed, except for a small portion that is still being held by the city.
Anything else? All right. Well, thank you for being here. I think when I talked to you on the phone today, I said we'd get to you by about 6:30, and I was, I was about as close as your completion date. That was a cheap shot, I apologize.
Well taken.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessel included a staffing update in his memo, and just so the public knows, we did bring a Public Works Director candidate into the city for an interview, and after the interview, Mr. Kessel decided not to extend an offer to that individual. He also did bring a candidate in for the planner position. He did extend an offer there, but the candidate declined the offer. And last I knew was that he was trying to reach another candidate for that planning position to set up an interview trip. And, Mr. Soren, I don't know if he was able to do that or not, and if he did, I'm not sure if he said anything to you. Do you know?
I haven't heard any updates on that, but I know that was the next step we were going to take.
Okay. So that's kind of where we're at on staffing there. And then there, you can see there's a thank you note from the city of Taylor for some of the sales tax monies that we awarded them. And I think that's all that was in his report. We would move to tab nine, which is accounts payable and payroll, and I would ask if there's any of the payables or payroll that you wish to discuss. Now, is there a motion regarding the approval of the payables and payroll?
Move to approve.
There's a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. We'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Lambloom.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Are there any reports by city commissioners? There's no reports by city commissioners. Is there anybody left from the public that wishes to comment regarding any items? So, step to the podium, state your name, and hear your comments.